Good evening. It is now 6:30 PM and we welcome you to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. We ask that you will please stand and join us with the invocation to be given by William Poole with our chaplain of the Henry County Police Department and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we pray for our Board of Commissioners, we pray for Chair Wood, we pray for Ms. Clemmons, Mr. Barham, Ms. Thomas, Mr. Holmes, Ms. Matthews, and Mr. Wilson. We lift up all the residents of Henry County. Father, we pray and ask that you would give us today your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding. Give us what to say and how to say it, what to do and how to do it. We ask this all in your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And again, we welcome you this evening and we are now calling the Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We do have a couple of announcements regarding changes to the agenda. The following planning and zoning items that were advertised for this meeting have now been postponed and I'm going to list those. The first one is a public hearing, RZ 1905, which is General Holdings Unlimited LLC requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to residential suburban for property located on the northeast corner of the intersection of East Lake Road and Springdale Road in District Four. The second public hearing that has been postponed is with John Jordan Heck Walker requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the property located east of Highway 1941 and west of Old Highway Three and Old Griffin Road in District Two. And then the third public hearing that has been postponed this evening is John Jordan Hock Walker requesting a rezoning from neighborhood commercial to mixed use for property located east of Highway 1941 and west of Old Highway Three and Old Griffin Road in District Two. And the final public hearing that has been postponed is General Holdings Unlimited requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to single-family residence for property located at 1496 Millers Mill Road in District Four. Are there any other changes or modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda.
Some move.
We have a motion?
Yes.
And a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? The agenda is unanimously approved. We're now moving to our next update, which is regarding a 2020 census update. And we're going to welcome in our partnership specialists from the U.S. Census Bureau and I ask that you please pronounce your name so that I don't mess it up, but is Ife Oyalea?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, welcome this evening. We welcome you this evening.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board and residents. My name is Ife Oyalea, as she mentioned, and I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau and the Department of Commerce. And I have been assigned to the lovely Henry County to cover, to create awareness and to educate about Census Day, which is upcoming this in April of 2020. We all know what the census is. It's a head count of every person that is inside the U.S. It's done every 10 years, which is why it's called the Decennial Census. And it's constitutionally mandated by Congress, by the U.S. and by the Constitution. And it's something that we encourage everyone to do because it is their civic duty. And we also know that the census, basically, it deals with so many different things. Census deals with funding. One of the things that we go around to the counties, making sure that they are aware of, is that every 10 years, Congress apportions almost $700 billion from the federal government down to the state level, down to the counties and the cities, and it trickles down in that fashion. And so, we want to make sure that Henry County receives every dime that it's due. And so, my job is to go around to different parts of Henry County's government and make sure that they're aware of what the census is and why it's important. One of the things we know about the census is that it allows for the reapportionment of Congress. In the last census done in 2010, Georgia gained a seat because of the increase in population, because of the increase in number. And so, we want to make sure that we're on track to count everyone so that what's due us in terms of representation is given us. Another thing that, you know, the census does is it gives money to different federal programs. One of the things that we noticed in 2010 is that that was the worst undercount of children since 1950. So, what that tells us is that, for some reason, when we're filling out the census, we're forgetting our children. And the reason why that's important is because a child that's born on April 1st, for example, of 2020, by the time we do another census in 2030, that child will be 10 years old. And so, that's 10 years of federal funding that that child will not have because they weren't counted. Now, obviously, they're still going to go to school and they're still going to have teachers and they're still going to go to hospitals, they're still going to be driven on roads and things like that. But the funding for those programs for that specific child would have been missed. And so, we want to make sure that as people are filling out their census, they understand that your children do count, do not forget your children. In 2000, Henry County did a good job of counting its residents. They came in at 76%. 76% of people responded to the census. In 2010, that number increased to 81%. And that's a fabulous thing because the entire state of Georgia had about a 74% response rate. So, Henry County at 81% did a great job, but even at that 81%, that leaves a low response around 20%. And we know that 20% of residents that are not filling out their census questionnaire is a lot of funding left on the table. And so, what we really want to make sure we do is educate everyone to let everyone know that the census, while, you know, no one's coming to force you to answer the census, we also understand that the funding that your specific county needs is directly tied to the numbers. So, we know that funding follows numbers. It does not follow need. And so, we want to make sure that everyone answers their census. One of the great things about the census this particular time is that this, for the first time, we're allowing people to respond to the census online. And so, if you have a device, an iPad, a phone, a laptop, a desktop, or anything of the sort with internet connectivity, you can use that to respond to the census. Now, that's a great thing because most of us have more than one device, whether on us or at home, and so, it allows us the convenience of responding at any time. It's also a detriment because we know that 90% of the residents in Henry County have both a device and internet connectivity. So, that leaves 10%. And so, we want to make sure, from the county level, that we're making people aware that there are other ways to fill out the census. If you can't do it via the internet, then mailed questionnaires will come to your home. Now, obviously, that's not the best way because that's resources, but it is an option. And if after two times of not responding, then we will send people to knock on doors because that's how much the count really means to us. So, I wanted to essentially just take the time just to highlight those few things about the census coming up. Census Day again is April 1st. You will be able to respond to the census as of mid to late March and then a little bit into June. Hopefully, we won't get into June, but it is open until June, just in case someone is not able to respond or needs extra time out of the country, things of that nature. Do I have any questions?
All right, we thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the Board?
Okay, just one question. Could you speak a little bit to the resources that our local committee can have access to as we begin to step up our census count efforts?
So, if you go to census.gov, there are several resources right there that we've made available to every community, every county, city, things of that nature, that you can use as awareness as you go about pushing for census in this county. Another great tool that is also on the web, on our website, is Statistics in Schools. And that's one that we use to push our students so that they can now make their parents aware. And then, we kind of hit it from both angles. So, we target the parents, but we also target the children who will help to target their parents as well. But I think majority of our resources have been made available on our website that can be printed by anyone or handouts, flyers can be created in any kind of way. We also have something called Rome, and it is an interactive map on our website as well. And that will tell you the census tracts that need the most help in your specific county. One thing we do know is that we have a low response rate within Henry County of between 15 to 25%. And one thing we know is that any low response score above 20 is no longer, we're no longer talking about thousands that you're leaving on the table. Now, that number's getting into millions of funding that's being left on the table when the low response rate is that high. So, we do want to make sure that we get those low response rates under 20% as low as possible, definitely. But everything is available on census.gov.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The only comment I would like to make is I attended a census meeting and what has been interesting is not only are we competing against other states, but even within the state of Georgia, there are communities that are competing against other communities. I understand that South Georgia has actually gotten about 41 counties together and they are trying to make sure that they are getting the census count because they understand the significance of the money and the power, I would say. So, again, just appreciate all that we're doing. I looked to our county manager, are you going to give us an update locally during your comment section or not?
Yes, I can definitely update the board on what we're doing internally.
Okay, all right, thank you. We thank you and appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, well, now moving to several of our recognitions this evening. And the first one that we have is a Certificate of Recognition for Lambda Sigma Sigma Alumni Chapter. And we invite Ms. Melissa Robinson, our Public Information Officer, to make that presentation. And then afterwards, we'll have a wonderful resolution in love and memory of Willie B. Hatcher that will follow. So, we'll take pictures with both of these. So, again, we are excited that you're all here and that we will have those recognitions. Ms. Melissa.
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a Certificate of Recognition for Lambda Sigma Sigma Alumni Chapter of Stockbridge, Georgia, in recognition for all of their community works. We have some members with us who would like to come up, but before they do, I'd like to just share with you some of their activities that they do for the community. Having served the community since 2012 and with over 100 women in the local chapter, the members of Lambda Sigma Sigma continue to stand up and stand out. That's their tagline. And its members serve our community in a variety of ways. And some of those events and initiatives include Operation Big Book Bag, where they supply school supplies for children in need and for teachers; Souls for Little Souls, where they collect new shoes to provide youth in area shelters; Project Cradle Care, where they provide information on the importance of prenatal care; Youth Symposium, where they bring the youth into the community together for a day of leadership development and education. They also have a Women's Wellness Initiative and a program called Swim 1922, where they teach young people basic water safety. They also have annual fundraising efforts, and some of the bigger names that they help fundraise for are the AIDS Walk, the St. Jude Hospital, and the March of Dimes. And so, for those reasons and more, tonight, you're recognizing them with certificate.
All right, well, we thank you and welcome you to please come down and we want to say thank you as well. I do want our county manager to also know that they've stepped up to say that they want to definitely help with the census as well. So, we appreciate you all for standing up and standing out. So, if you'll join us for a picture with the Board of Commissioners, thank you.
Okay. The second recognition we have this evening is a joint resolution between the four cities and the county recognizing the Willie B. Hatcher post. Whereas, Mr. Willie B. Hatcher was born to Rosa Rosie Usher and Benny Hatcher on the 16th day of September 1916 in Jasper County, Georgia, and he was a faithful and loving husband to his wife Ruth C. Hardy, with whom he had one son, Willie James Hardy. And whereas, Mr. Hatcher enlisted in the Army in Fort Benning, Georgia, on the 26th day of June 1941, at the young age of 24 years old, and was assigned to the 97th Engineered General Support Group located in Manila in the Philippines, where he attained the rank of Technician 5th Class. And whereas, on the first day of November 1944, at the young age of 28 years old, Willie B. Hatcher passed away at Fort William McKinley in Manila in the Philippines and was interred at burial plot F, Row 14, Grave 93, at the United States Manila American Cemetery and Memorial. And whereas, the Willie B. Hatcher American Legion Post 516 was established on the 13th day of April 1953 and formally chartered in tribute to Mr. Hatcher on the 11th day of March 1985. And whereas, on Saturday, the 2nd of November 2019, the Henry County community will gather together for the Willie B. Hatcher Memorial Tribute at Shiloh Baptist Church. And whereas, although his physical remains will continue to be located at the United States Manila American Cemetery and Memorial as a symbol of the ultimate sacrifice he paid protecting our great nation, it is with great honor, we are able to say that his spirit and memory have returned to the southern soil of his hometown, where he grew up and will now and forever be memorialized at our very own City of McDonough Cemetery. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby extend this resolution to the family of Mr. Willie B. Hatcher in honor of his service and his sacrifice. And I believe we have some members here.
So, we want to commend again Post 516 from American Legion for honoring Willie B. Hatcher. And I'd just say that that is a very momentous occasion in the fact that Mr. Willie B. Hatcher is noted as the first individual from Henry County that was killed in World War II. And we just want to honor him and his family. We thank the city of McDonough for really all that they've done to honor Mr. Hatcher, even naming a street after him. And I also want to commend the other cities for, there was a joint proclamation that was signed, and we thank Mayor Copeland for leading that effort, and we are just honored to honor you all as well. And thank you all for your service, for being here too. So, thank you again. So, at this time, we will now move into our county manager comments and invite Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews as our county manager.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Just a couple of comments this evening, because I know we have a long agenda, but wanted to make the Board aware that we are moving expeditiously and getting meetings scheduled with each of you all for some one-on-ones as we culminate some of the action items that we identified during our strategic planning session. Believe it or not, we are already kicking off our FY 2021 budget meetings. And so, we want to sit down with the Board so that we will know exactly what priorities we need to include within those budget conversations, but specifically, if there are any priorities within your respective districts that you would like for us to consider as we navigate through the budget process. So, I just wanted the Board to be aware of that. And then, I wanted to remind the Board that on this Friday at 8:00 AM, we do have a joint meeting with our Development Authority. Myself and Mr. Finn did meet this morning to develop an agenda for that meeting, and we are hopeful that we will get some things outlined in terms of the role of the Development Authority and specifically, some items that the Development Authority would like to make sure that the Board of Commissioners is aware of. So, I just wanted you all to be aware of that. And then, finally, Chair Wood did ask for an update regarding our Census 2020. As you may or may not know, our Connecting Henry, which is the Department of the County, has a group that's entitled the Collaborative Group that meets monthly to talk about any issues that are within our community. And that group has graciously agreed to identify committee members that will help to get the word out. Now, the efforts of getting the word out will be handled through the county manager's office, and we will have an internal staff member that will oversee that committee. And I've received from some of the commissioners individuals' names who'd like to serve on the committee, and so, we will get something posted on our social media page for those that may be interested in participating. We have already started receiving resources that are available for us to distribute for those that may want to go ahead and hand that information out. But we do recognize that it is very important to get the word out, but to also make sure that we're reaching out to those populations that may not have the accessibility to providing a response. I will tell you that the committee does include representatives from Pete Mont Henry, Children's Healthcare, Salvation Army, Goodwill, the homeless population, and a host of other leaders within our community that have agreed to participate in this process. I certainly will welcome any Board member that wants to be a part of this committee. So, if you are interested in at least being a part of the committee meetings, I will make sure that I send it to all of the Board members. But if you definitely want to be a part of those meetings, I will make sure that that information is shared with you all. At this time, that's all that I have, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Thomas.
Could you please give us an update on where we are with service delivery, strategies, or the conversations with the city? Where are we with that process?
So, I'm looking to our county attorney because he's been doing a lot of that negotiating. So, if you don't mind, I'll defer to our county attorney.
So, as I sit here, my recollection is that we have resolved virtually all of the outstanding matters. I think we have some minor issues on transportation with a couple of cities. And perhaps, perhaps, an outstanding issue on fire service with the city of McDonough. I'm not sure, Mr. Johnson may know, I'm not sure that one's resolved quite yet, but it's close.
It is close, and we're supposed to meet with the city administrator sometime this week to hopefully finalize that.
And otherwise, as far as the 38 or so other services, I think we have come to terms on those. There is a, there's a set of documentation that the Department of Community Affairs requires. I have initial drafts of those from representatives of the cities, and I'm reviewing those now. And I'll be reviewing those with county management over the next week or so. And once we work out those last couple of issues, we'll be ready to bring it to the Board.
So, what type of timetable are we looking at? Within the next two weeks, what are we looking at for the timetable?
I told the county attorney that I'd like to have this resolved before the New Year. I will say that the county staff has made every effort to meet with the respective managers for those issues that are outstanding. And my directive now is that we've come to a point of, I don't know that we're going to agree on some of the items, and so, we need to proceed. So, Commissioner Thomas, I would hope that within the next 45 to 60 days that we will have at least some next steps. I don't think that it'll be resolved in the next 45 to 60 days, but we are certainly at a point that we've made every effort to resolve any of those outstanding issues. Again, it's certainly our priority to make sure that we have this resolved by the end of the year, or at least get to a point by the end of the year that we've put everything out for the cities to consider. Mr. Joxetter is correct that the transportation, I believe, we are very, very close. Fire services, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, we are trying to get another meeting scheduled with the city manager, and so, that's the only thing that is still outstanding. But beyond that, all of the other items have been resolved.
And the big picture, sort of the big-ticket item in SDS is funding. So, you know, the underlying reason for the entire SDS process is to ensure tax equity between unincorporated residents and residents within the city. And I believe we have come to terms, and the last I heard was, I think, that the city managers, at least, at least, most of them, have acknowledged that the millage formula that was, I think, created by the county, it works. And I think we're, in general, at least at a staff level, a general consensus that that funding mechanism works and makes sense and is fair and equitable to everybody. So, that's usually, that's usually the thing that torpedoes SDS. So, we have resolved the big-ticket item. We're really down to some of the little minor details.
If we have come that far, certainly, I'm looking forward to, as you stated, the items that you cannot come to an agreement on, to give us some type of alternative as to what we plan to do to move forward. Because this is really, it's gone on a very long time, and we need to come to some type of consensus as to what we're going to do.
Absolutely. And we will be prepared to update the Board at our next board meeting in terms of a timeline.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? I do want to just ditto what Commissioner Thomas has emphasized. First of all, I want to commend everyone for, you know, at least helping us resolve as many of those items as possible, but I agree, we need to bring some resolution or next steps to moving forward on that. The other thing I wanted to say is just appreciate that strategic planning session. Appreciate, you know, the Commissioners that hung in there for that day and a half, and I want to say thank you to the Carl Benson Institute that helped us through some tough discussions as well. But I'm definitely looking forward to where we can move forward regarding our priorities and our goals. So, I want to say thank you for helping us to move forward with that, with the input of all the Commissioners, because that's important. All right. Okay. Commissioner Clemmons.
Sherry and Patrick, it would be helpful if you would send the Board the process of where you are with the SDS, because I understand you all are doing all that you can do. You can't bring it to a resolution if the city has not agreed. So, please, I know that there was a process, whether we go to court or, you know, what the next steps were. So, please bring that to the Board so they understand that you guys are doing what you can do, and you can't make a- can do, and you can't make a city commit until they're ready to commit. So just kind of update us of where you are in that process. So I thank you all, because I know we've had conversations, I know, about the fire department and moving this forward, but your hands are a little tied when the cities have not agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now moving to our consent agenda. And the following items are listed. And so, right now, we have from the District Attorney's Victim Services Program, a resolution to accept the Victims of Crime Act sub grant funding the criminal, from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council of Georgia. And so, that's one resolution. The other resolution is also approving of Victims of Crime Act sub grant funding the continuation of a contract for a grant counselor position in the District Attorney's Victim Services Program. And then the third one from the DA is resolution accepting the Victims of Crime Act sub grant funding the Criminal Justice Coordination Council of Georgia and the District Attorney's Victim Services Program from 10/1/19 through 9/30/2020. The, I have an item from the Senior Services, which is a resolution approving the Georgia Department of Human Services for FY 2020 contract through the Community Service Block Grant Program. And then we have two resolutions from the County Clerk's Office. One is a resolution approving the meeting dates of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 2020, and also a resolution approving the 2020 holiday schedule. So those are the items on the consent agenda. Does anyone care to have any of those items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion. And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor? The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We're now moving to the next item, which is Emergency Communications. And our presenter is Mr. Don Ash, our MA Director. And it's a resolution authorizing the approval of a contract for, with the communications for the relocation and system coverage for public safety, public safety communication. So I'll let you present that.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys. What we're looking to do in this resolution is to increase our public safety coverage on our radio system. Our current tower that's located at Site 5 is about a 20-year-old tower when we put in our first radio system. We're looking to relocate that tower to a different location on property that's owned by the city of Hampton through memorandum of understanding, which will allow us to increase coverage by putting it at a higher elevation and a tower at 250 feet, which should greatly increase our footprint and coverage in the Hampton area and the western portion of Henry County. The old tower that's there now will be decommissioned, and the shelter that handles the equipment will be relocated to the new site. The cost of this upgrade is $588,111. And as a part of this resolution, we will execute a MOU with the city of Hampton. We've had an opportunity to speak with Hampton, and they're 100% in support of this project. The funds are available in E911, and I'll be glad to take any questions you may have for me this afternoon.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemmons?
Do you have the information in that MOU, or you just?
So, I believe, Patrick, we are, we will have to draft a MOU with the city of Hampton. I have an opportunity to meet with the city manager, Mr. Cohelis, and he's in support of it, and he's given us authorization for any piece of property in the city of Hampton.
Without a fee?
Without a fee.
So you will basically just authorize? Sure. Accountant to keep and maintain the tower on their property at no cost.
Commissioner Clemmons, so the tower we have currently is located on city of Hampton property on Oak Street. And this system upgrade would also increase the coverage footprint for the city of Hampton as well.
Right, okay. Commissioner Holmes?
We used to have a number of issues on the county line, specifically in the Bodecrest, I think Bodecrest and Lyons, I forgot the name of the street, but where somebody in Henry County would make a call to our police department with the cab, where Clayton will show up, because all three counties merge at that intersection. Are we still having those kind of issues?
So, specifically what you're talking about, Commissioner Holmes, is related to the routing of E911 calls through cell systems. So now with Phase 2 wireless, we very rarely have those overlap calls. They're coming in directly to us. Occasionally, you may have one in the far north end of the county at the county line, but typically, they are being properly routed now.
Thank you.
Also, I think about all six commissioners have asked about our radio coverage. Would this expand our population, expand our growth? We've also introduced some small cell technology up in your territory, District 5, Palisades, the Pools Mobile Home Park, because we don't have coverage. And one thing we cannot do without, bottom line, is coverage for our emergency operations. And we're now in a, already, we've already approved that, denied to come to the board, but installing them small cells to do repeaters for our big towers, to get to them uncovered areas. So we are enhancing our whole county to make sure we do have the coverage necessary for safety of our residents and our, our, our emergency team.
Thank you, Brett.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion. And a second, any questions or comments further? All in favor? Okay, the resolution unanimously is approved. We're now moving to our next items, which is, one is a public hearing from the Community Development Group, and this is a resolution to approve the Amendment of Action Plans for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program that is awarded by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And we actually invite up Ms. Shannon Sangio, our Community Development Director, and Ms. Stacy Wallace, our Community Development Planner. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all, Madam Chair, members of the board. Henry County is a recipient of two Neighborhood Stabilization Program awards from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. The first award was received from DCA in 2009, the second in 2011. Today, NSP assistance has been utilized for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and disposition of single-family foreclosed abandoned residential properties for the benefit of low to moderate income home buyers. In total, Henry County has purchased 333 single-family residential units through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. To date, all of the homes have been sold. These activities were all carried under the NSP permitted eligible uses of A and B. Our presentation this afternoon is actually to add additional eligible uses. There are significant differences in the current housing market in comparisons to that of the early 2000s when NSP was first awarded. In the last several months, staff has made several offers on foreclosed single-family homes with the intentions of acquiring those to further the efforts of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Unfortunately, we've only been successful in the acquisition of one. To ensure compliance with the 25% set aside, excuse me, the redevelopment of demolished or vacant, of vacant properties and the demolition of blighted structures, which is eligible use D and E, can be added to the NSP action plans. This is requested to utilize eligible use D for structures that must be blighted, and blighted must be defined in the action plan. A structure is blighted when it exhibits objectively determinable signs of deterioration sufficient to constitute a threat to human life, safety, and public welfare. We're proposing to add the eligible uses of E and D to further the initiatives of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This will allow us to demolish blighted structures and also to redevelop blighted structures. Currently, these uses are not eligible under what is currently written in those plans, which were limited to A and B. What we have is the definition of those eligible uses, all four, A, B, D, and E. In conclusion, eligible use E is less restrictive than that that's currently in the plan, being A and B. Activities performed under eligible use E do not require that the property be abandoned or foreclosed upon, or that the purchase price be discounted from the appraised price. It is our hope that with the inclusion of these two eligible uses, we can continue our efforts with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, well, again, thank you for the presentation. This is a public hearing, so at this time, anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter will be granted three minutes to speak. So we ask that you please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak regarding this resolution, to please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, that concludes our public hearing. So at this time, are there any other questions or comments from the board regarding this? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that resolution passes unanimously. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move directly into the next one, which you were presenting as well, and you both are. And this is a resolution to approve the award of a contract to MCon Company for the single-family home rehabilitation located at 300 Falling Timber Court in Stockbridge.
Yes, ma'am. This is the sole property that we've been able to secure a bid on through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. A competitive bid was conducted for the rehabilitation of the single-family home located at 300 Falling Timber Court in Stockbridge. That publicly, excuse me, that bid opening was held on, no, it was advertised, I believe, on September 25th. Contractors met on-site on October 20th, excuse me, on October 4th, and the bid opening was held on October 28th. And we did receive four bids. Two of them were local to Henry County. We are requesting a contract with MCon Company out of Locust Grove, which was the lowest, most responsive bidder, at $78,167.14.
Okay, that concludes your presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Now, can you kind of describe the rehabilitation work that was going to take place at a high level, just for the public to hear?
Yes, this is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family home. What we are going to do is pretty much tear off the cabinets, flooring, repaint it, get some new roof, new heating and air, new water heater, bathroom cabinets, kitchen, everything but the bathroom floors, I think, are coming out of this house. It's a total rehab.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion regarding this resolution. Move to approve. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move into our next human services item, which is a resolution to approve the basic and volunteer life insurance through AXA. And Ms. Sangio, who's our interim HR Director, and Mr. Gases will make this presentation. Good evening.
Yes, and thank you. A renewal quote was received from Voya for the county's life insurance program. The Voya quote did not provide for an increase to the guaranteed issue amount available to employees on the voluntary life insurance. As a result, Elpic, our consultant, was requested to secure additional quotes. The life insurance was quoted by Cigna, Symtra, and AXA. AXA did offer the lowest rate at six cents per thousand dollars, and the basic at a rate of two cents per thousand dollars, which matches our current with Voya. The rates will be effective until, excuse me, effective on January 1, 2020, and will hold for two years. The Voya life rates are expected to take a significant increase in June of next year, and this is primarily the reason that we did ask for additional quotes in order to secure a rate for a longer period of time. We do have with us Mike Gases from the Gases Agency, and also Mr. Chris Clark from Epic. Should you all have any questions, or if these gentlemen have a little more they'd like to add?
I'd add a couple of things. We've been trying to do this a long time. And with this quote, we have a company, a very large multinational company, AXA, that will guarantee issue with no health questions to all employees $150,000 of life insurance. One-time open enrollment, and to be done in December and effective January 1st, as the resolution says. That's, and up to $50,000 on a spouse. So, we've asked for that before, we finally have it. You can get up to $150,000, no questions, no medical questions, and 50 on a spouse and 10 on children. And we really would need to, if this gets approved, to get the word out so we can hold the open enrollment for this in December, so that all employees know about this chance. A lot of employees have asked for more and done medical questions and been turned down. So this is an opportunity to let them all get what they want, up to that amount.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemmons?
How much is it? Is it, is the rate per month? What's, how does the, how is the rate per month?
Everything is staying exactly the same rate you have now. With the current carrier, and the current carrier's renewal would have a significant increase this coming May, June 1st. With this, we got it guaranteed for two full years, and all the rates are still the same.
And can they keep it after they leave the county?
Yes, it's portable.
Okay, any other questions from the, I'm sorry?
That's good.
Okay, all right, any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. We're now moving to our next item, which is a special purple, special purpose Locust Offshore Sales Tax Item, which is a resolution to approve a budget amendment to reallocate District 4 SPOS 4 funds from various completed projects to District 4 Mosley Park Project. So we invite up Mr. Rocky Williams, our SPOS Transportation Director, for the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Mosley Park is an approved SPOS 4 project. A budget amendment is needed to reallocate funds from various completed District 4 projects to District 4 Mosley Park project account. A total of $385,124 is available to be relocated from the following projects. Eastlake Road at Street Route 20, roundabout. Elliott Road, that their road is paved now, is completed. Kellytown Park. And the fire station number 16 at Kellytown, as well as fire station capital equipment. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment to reallocate funds from various projects completed in District 4 to District 4 Mosley Park. I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion. And a second, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move into our next item, which is a Financial Services Purchasing Update, which is a resolution awarding a proposal for consulting services for a disparity study. And we invite up Mr. David Smith, our Financial Services Director, for that presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners and Henry County community. What you have before you is a resolution to award a contract for consulting services for a disparity study. The Board of Commissioners authorized and directed the procurement department to issue a request for proposals from qualified consultants to conduct this disparity study. Proposals were solicited, three vendors responded, and their proposals were reviewed and scored by an evaluation committee. Keen Independent Research had the highest score. Staff recommends award to Keen Independent Research in the amount of $295,486. Included in your packet are the evaluation results. And even though it's small, that's the tabulation and evaluation. What questions do you have?
Okay, so at this time, I see Commissioner Clemmons has a question.
Let me tell you my concern about this. Let me tell you my concern about this. I was told, and I have been aware, that most disparity studies cost about $50,000 to do. And in the person, in the thing that I see in this package, this company wants $295,000, but I don't see what the other companies bid it, and why is it so much when it used to just be $50,000 for a disparity study? This is almost $300,000 for a disparity study. Where the other companies bid?
The other companies bid, their score should be on the tabulation sheet, but I will, in their, in their, in their responses to us, the average cost for the disparity study was anywhere between $250,000 up to $400,000.
Okay, well, I've always said, Sherri, that we don't need a disparity study when we know there's a disparity. There's a disparity. We don't have the data to show what we've been doing, because we don't have the data, so there's already disparity, so to pay somebody $300,000, I think, is a lot. Plus, we don't have all of the other companies of what they bid it in this package at all, so I'm not comfortable giving $300,000 to somebody without seeing everything, and knowing that we already have a disparity, there's some things that they don't even have to do, that's not going to take this long, when we already know, we've been having communication, communication, for years about the data that we're not capturing in our procurement process, so I just want to make sure that we understand that there's, there's still a serious issue with spending $300,000 for a disparity study, that we know there's already a disparity.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Maia?
Yes.
Chair Maia, a response?
I don't, I don't want a response to this, from staff.
Oh, well, there should be a to respond, so.
But I was directing this straight to.
Well, I'll direct the.
I was, that was. I was going to defer to David to, because he's dealt with this, this type of information before. I will tell you, Commissioner Clemens, that we did look at, and let me back up, because I know we've identified that we have some issues within our procurement services, and I think that was one of the reasons we did come to the board and receive authorization from you all to go down this path of hiring a consultant to come in. The difference between this process and a process in which we're bidding supplies is based on their qualifications, and so while you may have had a vendor, that their costs may have been less, based on what was submitted in that proposal, points that were being, or points that were being assigned may have been at a higher, higher level. Now, one of the things that I didn't notice is that David is correct in that the average cost did start at about $250,000, but we definitely need to have someone to come in and identify where we need to improve and what we need to do. I don't think that that's something that our staff is charged with doing, or has had the adequate training to make those determinations, which is why we need to bring someone in to do that. But I don't know, David, if there's anything else additionally you'd like to add to that.
So I'll tell you that my concern is that, I look at all of these hours, when you say a prime contract and subcontract data collection, they're going to spend 202 hours, when we have not even collected the data. We have people in our procurement department that didn't have anything on the computer, so it's not going to take 202 hours to collect that data. And again, I don't think that you need to spend $300,000, and then staff should have been able to look at this and say, well, we don't need all of this. Available analysis for county contracts, 3,000 hours? $100,000 for that? You don't need to spend 3,000 hours on that. So yeah, this, this contract is jacked up to get $300,000, and I don't think that we necessarily need to do $300,000. And I probably would be more comfortable had I seen what other, what the other bids were next to it, to see, well, this company felt like they only needed 30 hours to do this, so this company only needed 20, but 3,000 hours? Come on. Just my concern.
Understand, and certainly we can provide to the board.
It's going to go to a vote, I'm just one commissioner.
But I, I want to make sure that if, if the entire board wants to see a listing of the cost proposals from the other vendors, we can certainly provide that information. But I think we do agree that we're starting at ground zero. We don't have the information, and so they're going to literally have to come in, and in some cases, they may have to work with staff to figure out where to garner that information from.
I'd rather them develop a platform to capture it and spend money on creating a good procurement system than evaluate something that's not there. Had this been $300,000 to create, our procurement department to create a system that's different, but once we spend this, spend this money, all they're going to tell us is that there's a disparity, then we're still going to have to go pay money to build a program.
So noted.
Other questions are coming from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Wanted to know, have you all considered, in lieu of doing this, hiring some type of research analyst for us, that we actually have on staff, that can actually come into our systems every day? Put this data in some type of form to review before having to spend these dollars that are here? Has that been considered?
That was a consideration, Commissioner, but the purpose of this, this is the first step in determining whether we do have a disparity. The second step is you want to make certain that we have a defensible position, should we ever be sued, in the case where we develop quotas or percentages. So we want a defensible position.
By bringing out, bringing someone from the outside is what you're basically saying?
That's the first step. The second piece of this is that they are going to come in, this particular company, Keen Independent Research, they are going to come in and evaluate our procurement process. They're going to do that on their own, and advantage of this particular company is that they will not utilize our staff in doing it. They will research it on their own.
One other question, going back to what Commissioner Clemens has just stated, is it, have you looked at the possibilities of bringing software in to put our data in, to get an internal analysis as well, before calling in someone, and that cost should go down significantly, because the data will then be digital?
With the overall goal, Commissioner, of trying to achieve information to ensure that we have a defensible position for being able to allow other vendors and contracts exposure, to be able to get contracts with the county, we have to conduct a study.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, I would say that I know that there's been lots of questions about our processes that we have for procurement, so again, what I see is staff bringing forth a recommendation. Now, I will say for myself, the, the dollar amount is kind of raising questions, but I do believe we've got to, I like the process by which you're thinking, is have somebody outside to come in, because some of the questions that have come out are our internal processes. So those are my thoughts about it, so any other questions? I see Commissioner Clemens got her hands up, and I'm just looking for other board comments, because I know there's been questions about our procurement processes.
And I would like to say, I agree that there's questions about our procurement process. This does not address our procurement process. This pays somebody $300,000 to tell us we have an issue with our procurement process. I think that you can go with somebody less to tell us we got issues with our procurement process, and I'd rather see $150,000 go to a disparity study, at least, and $150,000 go in hiring somebody to come in to bill what it needs to look like, because they don't do this in this $300,000. If you told me this $300,000 tells us that we have an issue, and they create the process and the platform to fix it, then I'm okay, but after we do this disparity study, we pay them $300,000 to tell us, you guys have a disparity, what you're doing is not what you're supposed to be doing, or what you're doing needs to be fixed, then you still got to go pay somebody to show us how to fix it. So my concern is not that we need to do a disparity study, we do need to do a disparity study, but the amount of $300,000 to do the disparity study that we already know is a disparity is an issue. I think you could have went with somebody cheaper to do this disparity study, and I can't see who else bid it. I can't see the other amounts. I can't see that somebody else might have thought there were other hours. This is a disparity. This process right here is an issue.
Other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
So the staff put us at a, and with, with all the people in our finance departments put us at a triple-A bond rating. I'm going to have to put my trust in staff and the finance department through this system, because they got us that far. So you got my support on this.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Again, calling for a second. All right, well, the resolution fails right now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to the next item, which is a resolution from the Department of Transportation, and this is a public hearing item, and it's a resolution to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Fortston Road. And we'll invite up Mr. David Simmons for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening.
Board members. As you mentioned, this is a request, a public hearing to request and abandon and declare surplus a portion of Fortston Road, as shown on Exhibit A in your, in your information packet. The request is to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Fortston Road, as shown on the attached plat, and more particularly described on the attached plat in the amount of 3.593 acres. And with that, I'll also point out, there's no, we found that there's no right-of-way out there, this is just a prescriptive easement, and that's the area of the prescriptive easement. The area requested to be abandoned and declared surplus has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it, and subsequent to BOC's decision, if abandonment is approved, the abandonment, closing of the roadway is contingent upon the developer-owner placing a gravel cul-de-sac south of the abandonment area. The abandonment has been publicly advertised in the Henry Herald on November 6 and November 13, and the adjoining property owners have been notified by certified mail. I'm probably a little late in doing this, but I think I hit those points. And that's the plat, and I think you have that in your package. When I did the PowerPoint, I went and added an aerial that might be easier to, to see, generally of the area, if you, the area is generally red, represents the portion sought to be abandoned. South of the red line is existing Fortston Road that comes around to the west and then to the south past the 4H Center. That part of the road will remain a public road. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, well, we thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions before we begin the public hearing aspect? Okay, well, this too is a public hearing, and we'll invite up anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter, regarding the resolution to abandon and declare surplus this portion of Fortston Road, if you would please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak on this matter will be granted three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, that concludes our public hearing. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
David, what happens to a road when we deem it abandoned or closed? I mean, it never opens back up? If development comes through there, do we not keep it up? What happens?
Since this road is prescriptive easement, the county does not own property out there on each side of the road like we do when we have right-of-way, so in this case, once we abandon this section, it basically can be closed once they do the cul-de-sac, and it's basically just part of the overall property that surrounds it.
So do we know who owns the property around it?
It's the Lower Woolsey 780. It's the, I think it's what, a year, year and a half ago, there was a rezoning for industrial out in that area, and it's generally that property.
So if they're, if they're looking to develop out there and they go into it, that will no longer be a county road, Patrick? So then they?
It's two different, two different things could happen after an abandonment. If we own the right-of-way, you know, I often bring you condemnations where we buy, where we condemn right-of-way. Splosh is often out buying right-of-way. If we bought the right-of-way and we own the land, after we abandon, abandoning the road simply says, there's no longer a public purpose, it is no longer a public road. If we own the land, you would continue to own the land, and typically, we have you adopt a resolution authorizing us to sell it to the adjoining landowners. In this instance, we don't own the land, there's just a public road there, which is what we refer to as a prescriptive easement. There's been, the road's there, there's been a road there for years, it's been a public road. What you are doing is abandoning the public's right to travel on that property, and the underlying land remains owned by whoever owns it, but it's not us.
Do they have, do the property owners have to accept that land? Accept that road?
That, well, it's no longer a public road, what they do with it is up to them. We, we're, all we're saying is, the public no, no longer has a right to travel on it. We don't, we don't speak to who owns that underlying right-of-way or underlying dirt if we don't own it. We leave that up to the developers.
Then my question would be, David, have the property owners been notified that this road that was once county road is now their responsibility and their road?
Yes, ma'am, they, they requested the abandonment. I think they've been having trash dumping issues, and eventually, I think development will come there, but in the interim, they wanted just to be able to close it off to keep from having to go clean up illegal dumping within the limits of the area sought to be abandoned.
Okay, so they've been notified?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, so now the floor is open for a motion. Move to approve. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve. We now take a ball in favor. Thank you. It passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay. All right, we'll now move into the planning and zoning cases, and again, as stated earlier today, several have been postponed, and the one, Item 16A, which was John Jordan Hake Walker requesting an amendment for District 2 of property located east of Highway 1941 and west of Old Highway 3 and Old Griffin Road, has been postponed. The next item's, I am, public hearing 16B, which is RZ19, John Jordan Hake Walker requesting a rezoning from neighborhood commercial to mixed use for property located east of Highway 1941 and west of Old Highway 3 and Old Griffin Road in District 2 has been postponed. And that brings us to Item 16C, which is RZ1901, which is the Forest Development Group of Allenwood requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to mixed use for property located on Flippin Road east of I-75, and this is mixed-use development to include single-family residences, multifamily residences, office and commercial uses in Districts 4 and 5. So we're here to hear the presentation, and this is a public hearing as well.
Good evening, Chair and Board members.
Good evening.
This rezoning request is for property located on either side of Flippin Road, north of Walt Stevens Road, and to the east of Interstate 75, as highlighted in green in your exhibit books and is seen on the overhead screen. So this property is part of a larger, for, over 465-acre development site, but this request only concerns approximately 317 acres, which are within the jurisdiction of unincorporated Henry County. Portions of the larger proposed development includes property located within the jurisdiction of the city of Stockbridge, as well as Clayton County. So on the zoning map, we can see that the property is surrounded by the city of Stockbridge, that's all the property shaded in green. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to MU Mixed Use for the development of a mixed, single-family residential, multifamily residential, townhomes, office, commercial, and municipal development. Mixed-use developments are required to comply with heightened Unified Land Development Code requirements, which includes open space and public space requirements, as well as other things such as interparcial connectivity, sidewalks, and things of that nature. The mixed-use future land use map designation of the subject property, which is shaded in a kind of purple color, and does allow for this type of rezoning and this type of property, excuse me, this type of request. Compliance with the net density limitation of up to 16 dwelling units per acre is required. So what we have on the overhead now is an amended site plan dated August 21, 2019. We can see that the residential uses proposed consist of two pods of single-family homes for a total of 282 homes, three pods of multifamily apartments for a total of 800 units, a multifamily townhome pod with 130 units. There's also an age-targeted or age-restricted component proposed of 33 single-family cottages, 15 duplex units for 30 units, a four-story independent living facility with 168 dwelling units, a three-story assisted living facility with 160 units, and 40 memory care units. So the total number of dwelling units proposed is 1,643. 1,643. This is reflected in the conditions. Of those commercial uses proposed, there's an area of 150,000 square feet of mixed office flex space, multiple hotels, general retail, restaurants, as well as other general office uses. The original request back in May of this year did include some area of industrial that has since been removed and is reflected in the amended site plan and the zoning conditions. Finally, the applicant's request does meet the threshold established by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, or DCA, requiring state review as a development of regional impact, or DRI. The state has completed its review and a notice of decision has been received by the county and the Greta findings have been incorporated into the zoning, the recommended conditions. So this is just to show you the very first site plan that staff received and how much it has changed.
About the actual square footage of the industrial that was proposed for the, in the original plan?
Yes, Commissioner.
Or you can have the applicant come up and discuss it in more detail, if he's here.
Would, would you like...
Yeah, we're going to let her finish the presentation and follow her process.
All right. So the recommend, the recommendation, on May 9th, planning staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval with 16 conditions. Now, this was on a previous site plan. This was before the property had been evaluated by the state as a DRI. So the zoning advisory board did recommend approval with an additional condition concerning those industrial uses. Now, after the DRI process has been complete, we have received those findings. So we are requesting modification. So the recommended conditions, they're over a couple of slides. I'll go over those briefly, but you do have them in your exhibit packets. Since the exhibit packets were published, staff is recommending three small changes to the conditions. And I have those, I'd like to place those on the overhead. So all of the other conditions remain the same. We're just requesting a slight modification to number 15, a slight modification to number 16, and an additional condition, number 18. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. All right. So Commissioner Holmes wanted to invite up the applicant to...
Hello, Chair and Commission.
Good evening.
Good morning.
I want you to discuss your initial intent for this development. I know it was intended to be an industrial development with a few million square feet of industrial space and semi-trucks and I know you had a big player on the hook. Can you talk about that in more detail?
Sure. The original intention was to do three large buildings, one of the million two square feet with a 40-foot clear industrial building cross-stock with some probably 220 truck docks for the large building. And it would be a regional facility as well as a 750,000 square foot cross-stock industrial building and then a 500,000 square foot building. It was intended to become a major logistics and possibly a manufacturing hub for, for the, so, near the airport. So it was, was going to generate a lot of trucks and we, we had a lot of interest from industrial developers to go there. It would have been the closest industrial site on the south side of that size to the airport.
Can you discuss the actual truck routes that were proposed at that particular time?
Yeah, we, we were going to go, we were going to create a, a four-lane road up to Davidson Parkway from the site to Georgia 138 to, to I-675 and 75.
And can you also discuss the reason why you amended the DRI?
We amended the DRI at the request of, of the board to look at, at redeveloping it into perhaps a, an entertainment-focused mixed use project with residential office, particularly office and apartments, as well as entertainment venues.
And also to keep the warehousing and the semi-trucks...
Exactly, to remove all the...
...in the county and not let it migrate up to the northern portion of the county.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Holmes.
Okay. Well, I have a question. I think there was some good points there, Commissioner Holmes. So how will, even with the density that you're speaking, how will that traffic flow? Are you still willing to do some type of infrastructure to address the traffic even though it's not trucks? Thank goodness. But there does seem to be a lot of other residential potential traffic and other commercials. So how, how are you still planning to do some infrastructure improvements in that way as well?
Yeah. The, the, the development of regional impact traffic study recommendations that you've incorporated into your zoning takes into account the proposed uses of the project. And so we will be building a number of improvements around, around the area. That, that should help alleviate that traffic over the next, you know, 15 to 20 years. This is a, a project that, you know, if we are lucky, would, would happen over a 10 to 15 year pro, to 10 to 15 year timeframe, but realistically more like 20 years. So the, the primary traffic would go from, from Walt Stevens all the way to Georgia 138 along a four, four-lane road with two spine roads that go to Flippin Road. We would be, be adding a six, 120-foot right of way along Flippin Road along our property so that there would be room for additional lanes of traffic. We, we, we are creating, you know, uses that are really meant to, to sort of help each other so that you don't have to get outside of the project. And people who come to the project from the interstate would be able to basically take a right on 138 and then an immediate right into the project. So that would, that should help with the traffic light. And then there's an additional traffic light at Walt, Walter Way. And we would be improving those, those turn lanes also.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, Commissioner Wilson?
So I'm looking at a proposed entrance ramp and exit ramp off of 75 North.
We, we are going to do our very best to get that done. It is unfortunately a federal, state and local process that can take years. So, so we are definitely in the process of doing a interstate interchange needs study through low, low engineering. And as soon as that study is done, we will, we will go through the process of trying to get a northbound ramp at, at Walt Stevens and then a exit ramp and then a northbound continuing ramp 1 to 75.
So there's going to be contingency of getting the project started? You're going to have to have that done?
Not, not at all. That, that's, that's something that, that we would love to have.
So is that going to be part of the condition? Is, that you have this in place?
No, that is not a, that is not a condition in the DRI. Because the, the, the truth of, of interstate interchanges is it, they can take 10 to 15 years to get approved.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. So at this time, we're going to allow those who are wishing to, we'll invite you back after the public hearing. But we're going to allow those who wishing to speak in favor, a total of 10 minutes to, to come forward now. And then likewise after that, those, the collective group wishing to speak in opposition, you will be granted 10 minutes as well. So at this time, those wishing to speak in favor, will you please come forward now? Okay. If, if you will come forward, please. May I may state your name and...
Evelyn Dempsey. I live on 203 North Bridge Drive, Stockbridge, right in the middle of this presentation.
Yes.
I'd like to know where we can get a copy of the presentation so we can understand it. I could barely understand what he was saying. I have no idea what he's talking about. I do know that we have access to 75 by going Davidson Parkway. It comes out onto 138. You take a quick right, you're on 675. You go down a little further, you're on 75. Backwards the other way down by Crowe, you can get on 75. The thing of it is, you can't get on 75 because the track, if it is so heavy. You can't even get out of my subdivision one way or the back way. It took us an hour and a half almost to get here from where I live. So I want to know exactly are they going to do roads before they do this and what are the barriers? Because I'm right on the border of what they're talking about. My fence backs up to their property. So are they going to do barriers between me and them? Buffers, I guess you might want to say? And what about Reeves Creek? What is going to happen to that? And what do you call that? The variance? Like coming back and forth or underneath or what? What are they going to do about Reeves Creek and the water flow coming down?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. We're in a public hearing, so your questions are being noted and we'll let staff respond where appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Again, this is the group that is wishing to speak in for, in favor of the project.
In favor, opposition.
Of, in favor at this time is for those wishing to speak in favor, to please come forward. Okay. So we'll give time soon, but those wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi.
Your name, sir?
Randall Brooks. And thanks for listening to me. My wife and I live on Walt Stevens Road, adjacent, the I-75 is just to our west. And we're south of Walt Stevens Road and we're west of Flippin Road. But we have approximately 14, 15 acres and we built on the property in 1986, when you literally could pull out of the driveway and not worry about traffic because there never were any accidents or problems with access or ingress or egress from the property. But, but now it's to the point where we literally, when we're going to work in the mornings, we have to spend 10 to 15 minutes before we can safely make a left and get on the I-75 after going through Spear Road. But we really need this and it's a, of the reason we need a complex like this or project, I don't think it's been mentioned, but my wife and I, we've got a brick veneer home and not a day goes by when we don't hear terrible squealing brakes and then hear the sound of a collusion, collision on I-75. I don't know if the county keeps words on the number of deaths from Walt Stevens Road south to Jodeco Road or any, any of those areas. But if they did, they'd find it's an atrocious area as far as safety. And I think that the, the initial plans that I saw had information saying that there was a possibility of a northbound access to Walt Stevens Road from I-75. And the reason that would be so crucial is the fact that it would give the fire departments and the police departments much quicker access because you, you literally can hear a collision. You know what it is. And we've seen everything from tractor and trailers hitting Walt Stevens Road, the bridge. But beyond that, they're having to go, the safety people, police and fire, they're having, if the accident ha, happens there at Walt Stevens, they're having to get those fire truck to leave from Flippin Road and go north and it to the I, or 138 where they can have access. But by the time they make that huge circle and go to 138 and then back south on 75, if it's in the southbound lanes, it takes them a long time. There, there are people dying waiting on the, the safety equipment to get there. But that's important to us. Like I say, we, we didn't plan on moving. We planned on being there. I'm 71. I planned on being there till I died. My wife's a little younger. We won't, we won't tell everybody that she's 24, but she's, she planned like I did to not have to build another home somewhere in, you know, at our ages. But I just wanted to let you know that there are a lot of, lot of factors involved. I'm sure you, you people are, are aware of that, but I, I think there are probably some people in the, in the building here that is not aware of what a terrible traffic situation it is. But I do vote for approval because I'm, I think it's needed. I think the I-75 access is very needed as well. But thank you for listening to me and I appreciate your help and your work you've put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the Board of Commissioners. My name is Jocelyn Williams. I live at 190 Bank Drive in Stockbridge, Georgia. I've been a resident since 1992. The reason I'm in vote of approval, as a teacher, we need vision. If I've been here for long, all I see is what I see. I like how everyone has come up this professional, the planning and zoning. Everyone has done their research and I know that we need help in this congested area. So I am in vote of approval. You have commissioners that have been sworn in that can see what I can't see. And it's just a blessing to have you in front of us, looking in the background to what we can't see. So I'm in vote of approval for this complex to come and to help people who don't have the homes, like my house is over 2,500 square feet. But some people, as a teacher, the children have nowhere to go, nowhere to live. So if everyone can get together on one accord and bring something in this community that will set us in Georgia so that this will be a hub, then I'm for it. And thank you all so much for listening. Appreciate you. Keep up the great job.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. That concludes that. So those who wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now.
Well, let me say good afternoon, Henry County Board of Counsel. My name is Madeline Hicks and I am a taxpayer, a citizen of Henry County, and I'm a resident of 205 North Bridge Drive in the North Bridge subdivision. And so I'm not opposed to change, but I'll, but what I am opposed to is that my property is adjacent to this developing property that we're talking about. And my concern is that you're talking about putting residential, commercial, we are going to have to deal with that as the residents of North Bridge Station. And so I'd just like for you to be considerate of us as property owners because when I bought my home, I also looked to live there for a long time. I don't plan on moving, but the traffic is, is notorious. And if you ride down 138, if you ride down Walt Stevens, if you ride down Flippin, North Henry, you can see with the traffic that we have now, you see the trash that people are throwing along the roadside. And that comes from the traffic congestion with people coming through who have no concern or no care for others' property. I can walk out my door and find trash in my yard and that's not from the residents. That's from people that's riding through, cutting through, going to Flippin or cutting through, going to 138 or North Henry. And so my concern is that when I was here the last time, we asked about that development in property. How would it be developed? And the developer said backyard to backyard. And so along with my neighbor, we want to know if there are going to be a barrier that's going to be put between our property and that developing property. We would like for that to be considered, considered us as well, as pa, as taxpayers. And so let everybody be pleased, not just one, one side. You know, look out for everybody. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? We're in a public hearing, so we're going to hear from our citizens at this time. If you're here for opposition, you have an opportunity to speak. Okay? If you're here for opposition, you have an opportunity to speak, okay?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm Clayton Cartt, resident in Locust Grove. I speak in opposition to this project because of many unanswered questions regarding the proposal and the impact it would have on Henry County taxpayers. The proposed development is anchored by a proposed county-owned convention center and 10,000-seat arena. When the convention center was first proposed to the SPOS 5 Committee almost a year ago in December 2018, the biggest question from committee members and residents, where is a feasibility study? Now, a year later, we continue to ask, where is a feasibility study? Additionally, this project is proposing over 1,600 dwelling units, extensive commercial uses, and high-rise office towers. There are no provisions within the concept site plan or proposed zoning conditions for a land donation to help the county in adding fire stations or police precincts within this large proposal. The Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia DCA completed an extensive review about this proposal and raised many questions and concerns regarding pedestrian mobility, walkability, wetland impacts, and other concerns. I would encourage all commissioners to read that DRI review on the Atlanta Regional Commission website prior to voting on this request. This request, though your portion is only 317 acres, the request in total is almost 500. And whether approved or denied affects the county's future and the county taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now.
Good evening. My name is Milton Myers. I live in North Bridge Station, right on Flippin Road. And as a citizen of Henry County and a resident of Stockbridge for 20 years now, living on Flippin, I have three simple reasons for opposing the rezoning for this massive project of the Forest Development Group. As has always been said, there's already horrible traffic on Flippin Road. We drive on there daily, and so I speak from experience. Secondly, when there are accidents on I-75 northbound or southbound, or on 675, 138, Hudson Bridge, they're all forced to divert through onto Flippin Road, practically closing it down. And you just get stuck there for, could be hours, which we've experienced frequently. And this also would hinder emergency vehicles, police, fire departments, reaching those of us who live on Flippin Road with health issues. And this is one less worry that we would like to not have to deal with. And just thirdly, this massive building project will destroy all of our beautiful green environment and sadly destroy all of our precious irreplaceable natural wildlife. And it will also destroy their natural habitats and their home and their deer and all kinds of wildlife in this area. And this project will have a lifelong negative impact. And it will affect us, all of us who, all of us long-term residents on Flippin Road. And so that's why we are hoping that this rezoning will not be approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now.
Good evening. Robert Kolpak, 272 Cotton Indian Creek Road. Development company, as far as I know, is established in December 2017. Don't see a storefront in Owenwood. Just a little question about this kind of a project for somebody that's been in business less than two years, and I can't really find anything on them. It's going to be a county-owned arena, so right now, like, we're on hook for at least 90 million minimum. City of Stonecrest proposed the same kind of development. They're saying it's going to be 700 million, but they're not going to be owed any money. It's going to be the developer. And traffic study initially did not include an arena or convention center. It's changed, but we probably need to do that traffic study impact. And no community meeting on this. A lot of people not sure what's going on with it. And it's something this big and huge and such a great development. I'm sure with all the empty warehouses in McDonough and Locust Grove, there was really some warehouse that really wanted to be on congested Flippin Road. It's a, I don't think that's an accurate statement. So if we can look at the empty warehouses in McDonough and Locust Grove and go, why does somebody want to build a warehouse in Stockbridge? Which I'm glad it's something else, but I've been in Hampton recently, and I can tell you by the airport, by the racetrack, there's a lot of room for a nice arena, nice convention center. The other thing to it is when they built Highway 20 years ago, and everybody talks about the county did 20 years ago and such, they built a road, and it's used one time a year now. That would be a great spot. I can get home from a race now in 15 minutes where prior to that road being built, it took me an hour and a half. Don't know if anybody else went to the races, but it was twice a year. Now we go once a year. Just a thought for you guys, and not that I'm pooping on the arena or the convention center, but the location, probably the right area. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. If you will come to the microphone, ma'am, we've got almost less than two minutes.
I just wanted to ask about Flippin Road, how they plan on widening the road? Because we have a lot of ambulances, fire trucks, police cars going up and down 24 hours a day, which ties up the traffic even more. They have an accident out in front of the subdivision I live in. Sometimes you can't get out for four or five hours because somebody got hurt badly or was deceased or something. So you'd have to try to get out the back way, which there now is stocked up because they've come off of 75 trying to back through onto Flippin that way. So I would like to know how they're going to widen it, like, how much? So that we can still have the emergency vehicles without causing more problems than we already have. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, that concludes our public hearing on this zoning matter. So we invite, again, the applicant along with Ms. Nieves to answer and address any questions from the board. So I think you had something you wanted to say, Commissioner Holmes, earlier.
Gary, you didn't discuss the four-lane road. Can you discuss the...
I'm sorry to say that again.
The four-lane road that will go along I-75 from Walt Stevens to 138? And then also I would like the county manager to address the rezon, the rezoning in the city versus the county. We're only looking to approve the area that's in unincorporated Henry County, not the area near North Bridge subdivision. That would be the city of Stockbridge.
And let's do keep in mind the questions that came from the floor about the barrier, you know, as well as anything along Flippin Road.
And to address Commissioner Holmes, I can hear. So the project as a whole extends far off the map. That's city of Stockbridge and then into Clayton. So Commissioner Holmes, you are correct, that we cannot touch. So while the site plan we're showing shows the over 465 acres, this dotted line here is what's in question tonight. This is proposed within city of Stockbridge, which is already zoned commercial. And this is within Clayton, unincorporated Clayton County. So we do want to keep in mind it's just this. This property for the proposed exit entrance ramp, that is also not a part of the rezoning. Excuse me, what was your other question? I'm sorry.
We were just talking about the area, the barrier. That would have to be, that would have to be conditioned by the city of Stockbridge, not the county.
Correct. So I believe the North Bridge Station subdivision, I believe, is here to the north, which is city of Stockbridge. So our zoning code, our ULDC, does not require buffering between like uses. So if your subdivision backs up to phase two of the same subdivision, there is no buffer requirement. So that same logic applies here, that because this is residential backing up to residential, no buffer is required as per our zoning code. Now, if, for example, the applicant were proposing instead commercial, then yes, the zoning code would require buffering.
Okay, other questions or comments from the board? I'm sorry.
It's the four-lane road from 138 to Walt Stevens.
Sure. We'll be building a four-lane park.
Think the other way.
It's this one, this bottom button is the...
Bottom one, okay. So what we'll be doing is, so currently Flippin Road is a two-lane road with one lane going north and one lane going south. What we'd be building is capacity that would increase the traffic flow from this point at Walt Stevens all the way to 138 in a four-lane road. So you'd have two lanes heading north and two lanes heading south. One of the conditions I saw in the zoning requires a median in this roughly two-mile-long road. And that would increase traffic flow along that road. And actually, my suspicion is that this road would carry roughly quadruple the traffic that Flippin Road would with the addition of the median, the limited turn lanes and left. So you would be really able from this point to this point to be able to travel this two-mile road at a fairly decent rate of speed. Flippin Road is very small. What we are doing is we're putting a total 120-foot right-of-way along Flippin Road along the property we own. We would be at this intersection, in this intersection, if the traffic study indicates that it's needed, we would do a traffic light here and a traffic light there if the traffic study is, indicates that it's needed. Incidentally, the traffic study we did that was recommended for approval by ARC, it did take into account the traffic for the convention center and arena and actually all of this development. So they looked at everything that's on this plan. Let's see. But yeah, this road should handle, should be able to handle at least triple to quadruple the capacity of Flippin.
So my last question, Madam Chair, is to the county manager. Can you discuss the 20-year land use plan and how that impacts this particular development? And say if this particular development fails, would they be able to bring back the logistics hub even if we vote no? How would that impact the county?
So Commissioner Holmes and board, the current future land use map designates this property as mixed use. And under the mixed use designation, there are a host of allowable and permissible land uses. If the board elects not to approve this request, and I'll have to defer to your RITSA because I'm not sure what the current zoning designation is, but it is my understanding that industrial would be a permissible use. And your RITSA, please correct me if I'm incorrect in that.
The property is currently zoned RA, so at the moment, no industrial would be permitted.
Correct. And so what the staff did in terms of their evaluation is they do look at the future land use map and what the map calls for. One of the things that I've heard a lot of comments tonight specifically regarding the convention and the arena facility is that there will be some commitment from the county. And the approval of this rezoning tonight does not commit the county to that. It does allow that type of use. But if the Board of Commissioners were to elect to do any type of convention or arena facility as a public-private partnership, that would come back before this board for approval. Now, the future land use map does permit this type of use, a mixed use. And within a mixed use, you can have various allowable uses. You can have residential, you can have commercial, and you can have office institutional-type uses. If this board elects not to approve the request, the applicant would have to wait a year before they could reapply for a rezoning on the property. So I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Holmes.
Okay, other questions from the board? I see Commissioner Wilson. Now I come to Commissioner Clemens, and I've got a question. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Cartt brought it up, talking about the public safety coverage. We're looking at a significant amount of residents here, single-family apartments and the senior complex, which is going to require some ambulances, fire trucks, and looking apartments and ladder trucks. And then the closest fire station, this location, is going to be the new one out on Flippin Road, actually on Jodeco Road. And the next closest one is going to be out on Rock Core Road, close to North Henry Boulevard. So this area here is going to need some coverage when it comes to fire protection, EMS, and most likely police as well. Are y'all willing to put those facilities within, in your, and build those facilities in this complex?
What I would say is that we are contemplating and would agree to donate some land in specific uses, I mean, in specific locations for perhaps a fire station or police station. With regard to the cost, I don't know how much that would cost.
Yeah, because if you donate the land, that still puts the burden back on the taxpayers. By the time you build the stations, you're looking at about $3 or $4 million. And then you got to put the equipment in there, so that's another couple million dollars. So you might be putting the burden on the taxpayers. With manpower and all, you may be close to $8, $10 million. I don't think the taxpayers need to pick up the tab for this development here.
Well, what I would suggest is that the total development of this project will generate some $12 to $14 million in ad valorem taxes for the county as well as sales taxes. That'll probably be an equivalent amount plus property, personal property taxes. So you're probably looking, this would be a very revenue-positive project to the county.
Yeah, if that's the only thing we had to, if that's the only thing we had to fund, it'd be great. But there's other funding in the county that needs that revenue as well. But when you're talking about you producing that type of revenue, that's going to go countywide. It's not going to be designated to just this complex. So I have a hard time putting the taxpayers on the hook for this complex to be developed.
Any other questions?
No, that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Clemens? Commissioner Clemens, ma'am? Did I say Commissioner Clemens? Okay, and then I had a comment, and then we'll come to you, Commissioner Clemens. Commissioner Clemens?
I looked at the approval from AR, from Greta, ARC, from the Greta. And I'm looking at the conditions that they have put on you for the infrastructure improvements from the eastbound right-turn lane and northbound left-turn lane on Flippin. If you, if the board is following it, it's under the roadway improvement conditions. I'm looking at the intersection control evaluation that has to be done for 42. You got to add a northbound left-turn lane on 138. All of these infrastructure improvements, all of these road improvements is a significant investment in the county. We don't have any money to do roads. Right now, we're wrestling with why are these roads still two-lane roads? Why aren't they widened? Why don't we have turning lanes? And so I just wanted to be clear, Sherri, is this the way this is written? Is this saying that they have to do all of these roads improvements in order to do this project? Or they can do the project without the road improvements?
If I can, Commissioner Clemens, yes. So these have been incorporated into the conditions. Let me go to that slide so you can see part of the amended conditions. So where it says due to the changes in the amended site plan as well as to reflect the Greta, number one, requirements of the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority or Greta Notice of Decision or NOD Attachment A, dated October 3rd, shall be met by the owner developer.
So have we looked at the amount of infrastructure investment that this road is, that this project will bring?
No, ma'am, we have not examined that. But we do typically pass on the conditions to the developer of the property whenever we have a DRI.
Right. I understand that. I'm just, my point that I'm trying to make is that this is an opportunity for us to get some roads. I mean, the infrastructure is going to be improved by the developer. And that's one of the things that I know that we usually have not gotten when we're getting high projects or high housing of high density. People building, and then they never widen the roads. And which is why our constituents are always complaining about, we've got all these houses and the roads are still two-lane roads. So I think that because of the, I'm assuming that because of the size of this project is why they had to do this? Yeah, so I would definitely, you know, like to know the amount of infrastructure. Just put a number on that of looking at this investment that this project will bring to our infrastructure.
Sorry, anything else?
No, good.
Okay, I'll go, and then Commissioner Thomas. A couple of things. First of all, this is a DRI, and we hope that individuals will understand what this means. And because it does have infrastructure investments, I think it's good, especially when the developer is planning to add some investments into it. These are the kinds of things that we definitely need to look for. And I will tell, the thing that I think about when I think about a lot of these planning and zoning matters is that as according to what we want in development, anything that's along I-75 and around major quarters, these are the opportunities for the high density so that we can continue to protect those areas that are outlined, that is further away from I-75. We are in a community that has got to begin looking at different levels of housing. And again, one of the things that this development does is does a live-work-play-and-walk concept. Now, I will say that I would encourage us not to even talk much more about this convention center until we get the feasibility study. If you talk about an opportunity where taxpayers may be at risk, that is where the potential would be if in fact that we have a feasibility study and it says that this is not the best location. And again, keep in mind, there's a lot of other development around other areas here in Henry County. There's lots of discussion even about what's going on over at the Atlanta Motor Speedway. I know Cedar Stockbridge has just broke ground on an amphitheater. And if you have a convention, a convention or conference center, it's going to cost money to run that and operate it. And so we've got to continue to have conversations about that feasibility study. I don't know what the timeline is, I thought we had a timeline. My question is, what is the latest on the timeline for the feasibility study for the convention center? Until we get that convention center, we don't need to have any more conversations about it because that's going to be a determining factor. The other thing is regarding the interchange. I don't see any, is there something in the DRI that speaks about the interchange? Because we do know what the process is to try to at least go through the process for an interchange. And by golly, we're still trying to jump through hoops to get an interchange here in a very serious safety factor area here in this community. So if someone can ask those two questions, that's my position.
Commissioner, Chair, I can answer the question about the interchange. That was not a part of the DRI study. I believe it's out of their scope, I believe. But no, it was not, it is not a matter of condition in the DRI.
And then regarding the feasibility study of the convention center, because we've got people thinking that this is common and the board has not taken action other than to at least list it, and we've not even voted on that. So we've got to clarify that feasibility study, so.
So, Chair, would, the feasibility study was actually part of a memorandum of understanding between this board and Forest Development Group. I do believe about a month and a half ago, I did send an email to the entire board, making you all aware that it definitely was not on schedule in terms of when we were expecting to get a report. But you all should have been receiving at least weekly updates on the status of the feasibility study. It is my understanding that the consultant, and understand that the consultant team that is actually preparing the feasibility study was not hired by the county. And so, we are working directly with Mr. Furrow in making sure that updates are provided to the board. But it's my understanding the consultant, over the last couple of weeks, or maybe two or three weeks ago, has met individually with the board members or has meetings pending to meet with those board members in which a meeting has not been scheduled. According to the memorandum of understanding that we had in place, the feasibility study should have been completed by September 1st. And staff has been working diligently to make sure that we can get it back on track because it is important to understand first, if it's feasible to do the convention and the arena facility. That's the purpose of the feasibility study. But then the other part of that is the market analysis, which is also included in that feasibility study so that we can, one, make sure that we do have the market that will support this type of development. You're absolutely correct in that tonight, what you all are voting on is whether M-U zoning is appropriate for this area. Is it supported by the future land use map? Is it supported by the recommendations from Greta? And I think staff has done a great job at outlining their position. I do believe staff did recommend approval, and certainly the approval is not just based on whether it's a great development, but there are a set of criteria points that staff utilizes in their staff report. They talk about, and those criteria points include, you know, future land use map designation, infrastructure improvements. And so a lot of the things that you all are going to be concerned with in terms of an interchange, I've been in this for a long time, and I've never seen a condition on a Henry County rezoning which requires a developer to construct an interchange. Now, I have seen recommendations where they will come in and say that there is going to be an impact to the existing interchange, and so you're going to be required to do X, Y, and Z. But please understand that the recommendation from staff is that any and all infrastructure improvements will be on the back of the developer. There will be no impact to the Henry County residents to make those improvements unless this board makes a motion to do that. But again, the recommendation is for us to proceed with the recommendations as presented by Greta. So I hope that helps. I have sent some correspondence back to Mr. Furrow, asking for a true definitive date on when we can expect at least a draft document, and I'm hoping to have that information. I will provide it to the board as soon as the information is provided to me.
Yes. Well, in my statements before I pass it on to Commissioner Thomas, is that, again, this is development that we're going to have to start thinking about along the major corridors in Henry County, especially I-75, and to protect those other outlined areas. That's how you shape the growth that we have. I do say that please don't make a reference of an interchange or a convention center, especially this convention center, until we go through this feasibility study review. Those are the things that are concerning me, but again, I just think that this is a development that we've got to start developing here. And again, I'm just glad to see that there are infrastructure opportunities that are included in the DRI, which means that the Georgia Department of Transportation is tied into all of this, the Atlanta Region Commission, who are the ones that help with the state and federal funding are tied to this. And yes, for those citizens who are concerned, you know, about your properties, you know, again, there is a conversation that needs to continue. But what I'm understanding tonight is this is about the zoning matter right now, but there's a lot more work to be done, no doubt. So, those are my comments, Commissioner Thomas.
Well, I just wanted to comment what you just emphasized. This is about the zoning matter tonight. We want to stay focused on what we're voting on. And in addition to that, it was mentioned whether or not this would be a heavy tax burden to the citizens. We need to remember, I don't remember any other, any other developer who has come before us to offer to work with our infrastructure like this developer. And put that much money into our roads and to make it worthwhile to bill out the project and do the infrastructure. Out of all the projects from the warehouses and the million-dollar-square-foot warehouses down south to coming back, they haven't done it. And that's one of the reasons why we have a problem is they didn't offer to do it, and commissioners didn't make them do it. So we need to consider that. And then we talked about would this be a tax burden? Think about all the jobs that this development can potentially bring to the area, the property taxes that it's going to bring to the area, all the sale taxes that it's going to bring to the area, ad valorem taxes, and the quality of life that it would bring as well. So we will be able to afford to pay what's necessary to protect the area as well. It balance out everything like it should, and we are close to I-75, like we should be with this type of project. We're on that side of town. Like the Chair just stated, there are some things that we've got to try to do to grow Henry County, and these are some of the things we have to do. I don't know if we'll get another applicant that's going to come and invest in our infrastructure like this particular one is willing to invest. So we really need to consider what he's bringing to the table. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm going to move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
There's a second. Any further questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification, we need to know we're approving with the zoning conditions as recommended by staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would assume that the resolution includes all of that.
Well, there was a modification, so you all should have.
Okay, clarify that. Again, we got a motion and a second, so we're having discussions. So what's the clarification of that, then? What's the modification?
We're moving to approve with the zoning commissions that were amended at the beginning of the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. So as noted earlier, the public hearing regarding general holdings unlimited, requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to single-family residence for a property at 1496 Miller's Mill Road has been postponed, and that was in District 4. And we'll now move into the next item, which is a public hearing from Alder Properties, requesting a modification to zoning conditions for property located on the west side of Town Center Village Drive. And this is to increase the maximum number of dwelling units from 540 to 897 in District 2. So this is also a public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item before you is a request on Town Center Village Drive, and this location is just south of Jonesboro Road, as indicated on the overhead and also in your exhibit books. This property is a part of a larger planned development that was zoned back in 2001. There were many pods included in this planned development, but this subject property is a part of an RM residential multifamily pod, which includes the existing Mandalay. It also includes Canyon Springs, which I understand to be in the development permitting phase, but then also a portion of the subject property on the west side of Town Center Village Drive. The zoning of this planned development is PD planned development, and as we had discussed, the subject property is a part of the RM pod. The future land use map calls for mixed use, which allows for up to 16 dwelling units per acre, and that is our policy guide. The applicant's site plan includes a rather large apartment community, and in the center of this slide is Town Center Village Drive. On the right side is Canyon Springs, and on the left is the proposed development, which requires an increase in the maximum number of dwelling units that were allowed as this planned development was amended back in 2017. Currently, the maximum number of units is 540 dwelling units. The applicant has requested that that maximum be increased to 897. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request, and we have noted that the corresponding density would be around 18 dwelling units per acre, and so this is not supported by our future land use map. The RM pod, as it was modified in 2017, it was increased from 35.5 acres to 51.44 acres. And the maximum number of dwelling units at the time was increased from 300 dwelling units to 540 dwelling units. These densities, the density that's supported is 16 dwelling units per acre net, so we need to look at a net acreage. So if this RM pod, which includes the existing development, the development under construction, and the proposed development, if this is supposed to be limited to 16 dwelling units per acre, and the gross acreage is 51.4, if we take out an estimation of the right-of-way of Town Center Village Drive, and we look at an estimation of the net acreage at 50 acres, and we have a policy guide that limits us to 16 dwelling units per acre, we're looking at 800 total dwelling units, which though staff recommends denial of the increase to 897, we can recommend approval of a total of 800 dwelling units. This slide that's on the overhead, it's very difficult to read, but they're proposing a little over 300 additional dwelling units. And so, it may be a good question for the applicant, why they were proposing an additional 357 dwelling units when this site plan for the new complex just shows a little over 300. So it's in the opinion of staff in our evaluation that the applicant only seems to need an increase of 300 dwelling units, but it would be a better question for the applicant. So staff does recommend denial of the applicant's request to increase the total number of dwelling units to 897, but I wanted to clarify our position that staff would recommend approval of an increase to a total of 800 dwelling units per acre. I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, this will be a public hearing as well. Are there any questions from the board?
You just confused everything, Stacy.
Basically, it seems like the applicant only really needs an increase of 300 dwelling units.
Right, so when you say an increase of 800, it makes people think that you're putting 800 apartments. There were already 540 apartments.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the applicant is really only asking for 300?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, and I think the other clarification, he says that they're recommending a total of 800, you know, which includes the existing plus the proposed, is that what you said as well, or?
So if we look at, it seems like the applicant needs an additional 300 dwelling units in order to develop their proposed site plan. That is over the 800 that staff is recommending approval for.
So go back to the staff approval before, because staff already approved 897. Can you pull that paper up?
Yes.
And how did you all approve 897 on that date?
That's a very interesting question. In 2007, the condition, excuse me, in 2017, the, the, that's right, that's right. So the total number of dwelling units was increased from 300 to 540. In 2018, the applicant came back to request another modification. So they requested several things, but one of the things that they requested was to be increased total dwelling units from 540 to 897. Staff recommended approval of the applicant's request, and I can't speak to any directive that might have been given to staff. I don't recall those directives, but staff did recommend approval. However, the board did not agree that that was appropriate at that time. So in 2018, this pod was modified, but the portion of the request at that time to be increased to a total of 897 was not included in the board's approval. Fast forward to 2019, the applicant has come again before this board, requesting again a total of 897. However, to achieve the site plan that the applicant is showing, it seems like they really only need 300.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board? Clarifications further? Okay. All right, well, we'll begin the public hearing, and so at this time, those wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, will you please come forward? That collective group will be given 10 minutes, and those wishing to speak in opposition afterwards will be given 10 minutes as well. So at this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, please come forward now. Okay, seeing none, hearing none, and those wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, that concludes our public hearing. So at this time, again, we'll invite up the applicant and to address any questions or comments from the board.
I want Stacy to put the picture of what they've already done. So the 540, I just want to explain to the board and to the public so they understand. When they came in 2017, 2018 for the 897?
Yes, ma'am.
Staff approved 897, which was going to be 540 additional apartments. At that time, I said to the applicant, build the 240 first, and let me see what you do with the 240. And if you do a good job with what we're looking for with the 240, when you come back, then request the 300. So that's how we got to the 240, to the site plan being the 300, and the 897 being 540. So if you would put the picture up, I do want the public and I want the board to see what they built. Do you have the picture? Or just the board has it?
What I have?
This right here. This right here.
I can.
This is what they built, and Commissioner Wilson made a good point about ladder trucks. We gonna need a ladder truck, right here. This is the first of its kind in Henry County. It's an elevator apartment building. There's no way to get in unless you get in the elevator to go up to these levels. It is a high-end, mostly two-bedroom apartment. The gem in this facility is two stories. It is what we need to do to attract the millennials to our county. We did a, we had someone to come in and do a demographic study of Henry County, and they said that five in the ten of people that are sitting in this room right here tonight will be over sixty-five in ten years. So if we're growing to a senior community, then how do we attract millennials to make sure that our county continues to grow, if the only thing they can do is buy a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home? Now, certain communities don't need apartments, but this is right at seventy-five. It is the only live, work, and play that's in this community. So where this is, is behind Cheddar's, Olive Garden, Best Buy, Dick's Sporting Goods, Juicy Crab. This is where this is, so those people can leave this, these millennials can leave this place and walk to shopping. It's across the street from Target, Home Depot. This is where this is, right close to seventy-five. So they're asking to finish this project on the other side, and if you will put up the purple piece that you had, the other sheet that you just had before, to show the different part properties, the different parts, yep? So the purple to the right is with the picture that you just saw, and they'll finish doing the same thing to the left on this side. Is that, that's the difference?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I just wanted the board to see that project.
All right, other questions or comments, and I've got one. I think developments like this is not just for millennials, I think it's for seniors as well, because there, again, will be opportunities for people to walk or, you know, to get to all of these locations. And the key is, is that, yes, we are thinking about millennials, but we also have an aging population as well. And if you think about it, some of these individuals who would have driven to go somewhere else are pretty close in proximity, so hopefully they will be doing more, you know, walking and exercising to get to these places to eat and play. So again, tho- those are some some thoughts that I wanted to share with that as well. Any other questions or comments?
I stand corrected, because, yes, if I was selling my house, this is what I would want to live in, so.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Byrne?
Yes, Stacy, tell me again, what staff recommended, you say three hundred?
Yes, sir, we recommend denial of a total of eight ninety-seven, but approval of a total of eight.
Eight hundred?
Yes.
So that would be, they would need three hundred?
The the three hundred additional exceeds staff's recommendation.
That was the recommendation, that they approved eight ninety-seven. So staff already, can you share, can you pull the sheet? So this is the thing, commissioners, staff approved eight ninety-seven.
But how many were you considering?
Last year, staff approved eight ninety-seven, when Dante was here. When Stacy and them looked at it, they approved eight hundred. So my thing is that if we're not going to approve eight ninety-seven, the media, the midway would be the eight forty.
Yes, ma'am.
Because staff has already approved it. So if we go back and say that, well, staff approved it, and the staff took it back, because staff has already approved eight ninety-seven, and you should, Stephanie actually pulled the resolution for that for us, and do anybody have a copy of it? Because I do.
I may have that, sure.
Yep, staff had already approved eight ninety-seven, so.
So Stacy, while you're looking for that.
If I recall, we went back through the minutes, and staff did recommend in their staff report approval of eight ninety-seven. The minutes state, and and I hate to put the attorney on the spot, but the minutes do state that the attorney mentioned that there had been some conversation between him and the applicant, and they actually withdrew that request to get it to eight ninety-seven. So you are correct that when initially the request came in, staff did approve that request as a recommendation to the board, but when it was carried through on the actual resolution, that eight ninety-seven was not a part of that amended recommendation.
Because it was approved for additional five forty, which is what I stated, the five forty, which was five forty above the three hundred that was already in Mandalay. This is a different builder. This is a different, Mandalay was one set of apartments that was three hundred. This builder came and wanted it to go from, to go to fi- wanted five forty. So we did the two forty first, and now we're doing the three hundred of the five forty, which we already approved.
Right, and and I guess just, I think what what'll make this easier is that what the applicant is asking for.
One minute, Sharon.
Okay.
The staff approved eight ninety-seven, and the ZAB approved eight ninety-seven.
Correct, but that eight ninety-seven would have been inconsistent with the future land use map.
And we're not going to give them eight ninety-seven tonight either.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And so the eight hundred would be consistent with the future land use map.
But the five forty would be consistent, would be a a median point of what we already approved.
Correct.
Um, I think I was following there until that last statement, because because what I'm trying to get to is, is it eight hundred, or is it eight forty?
So what you are being asked to do tonight is to modify the zoning condition as it pertains to the number of units. What staff is recommending is that it not exceed eight hundred units. However, we get to eight hundred, the eight hundred is the number.
But staff made approval of three hundred. That extra three hundred is not going to be, that extra three hundred is going to be eight forty.
That that is correct, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay, so what staff is, so I would ask that staff change their language, because the three hundred that they're recommending is not eight hundred. The three hundred that staff has recommended is going to put them at the eight forty that they had already approved, which is the five forty.
And if I can clarify, staff's recommendation is for eight hundred. We recognize that the applicant needs a total of eight forty, but because of the densities at this time, we can only recommend approval of a total of eight hundred. But it's true that the applicant needs eight forty in order to develop as they have proposed.
Okay, okay, so other questions or comments from the board?
I would like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kathy Watts Jones, and I'm in Peachtree Corners, Georgia.
My question to you is, is eight hundred total units, does that work for you?
No, it does not. When we originally came in, we asked for eight ninety-seven, and we had, we only had concept plans at that time. And when we came back in this time, we asked for the original eight ninety-seven that staff had recommended approval for. And we, at that time, we still only had concept plans too. But since that time, we have gone to our engineers, Cohibra Lewis, and they have given us a preliminary design. And if, and with that design is, the preliminary design Stacy put on board was three hundred and two units. So if we can have an additional three hundred units to the five forty already approved, that will work for us. So a total of eight forty does work.
Okay, so can you explain why the eight hundred one? I know it's probably engineering and design and all of that, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, the eight hundred doesn't work, because that would, because when they do the concept plans, and even now with that concept plan, we don't know our exact unit mix until we get a finalized set of plans. And so the preliminary concept plan is three hundred and two units, which would put us at eight, at eight twenty-five units. But then we have to look at the mixes and see if the mixes work once they start putting in the amenities and all of the design work. And so that's why we want it to eight forty, so we can change the mix if we need to, the one, two, and three-bedroom mixes.
And of this three hundred, how many one bedrooms and twos and threes are you going to have?
Um, right now, we don't have an exact amount. We look at percentages. I do have some data here, if you just bear with me. I'll look at the actual percentages. Right now, we're looking at thirty-five percent one bedrooms, fifty-three percent two bedrooms, and twelve percent three bedrooms.
Thirty-five percent one bedrooms?
One bedrooms, fifty-three percent two bedrooms, and twelve percent three bedrooms.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, all right, well, we have had the public hearing and discussion by the board. The floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I would like to make a motion that we stick with the original approval of eight ninety-seven, but changing the condition that instead of the eight ninety-seven, that we do eight forty, which will give the applicant additional three hundred for the second phase. So my motion is that we would approve additional three hundred units for the second phase of Canyon Creek, Canyon Springs.
Okay, well, we've heard the motion with those modifications.
Second.
There's a second. Are there any further questions or comments? All in favor. Okay, it passes five and ones away. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move into our next item, which is our county attorney update, and it's regarding an ordinance to amend the code of the, regarding the sale of alcohol beverages. Good evening.
As you all recall, in November, there was a referendum held throughout the county to approve what was popularly known as the Brunch Bill. What the Brunch Bill did was extended the hours during which alcoholic beverages can be sold in restaurants, that's for consumption on the premises, from eleven AM to twelve-thirty PM, so, yeah, to twelve-thirty PM. So originally, and then, as you all are aware, that referendum passed. So this is what the ordinance, your ordinance looked like before the referendum, and you'll see the hours of sale on Sundays are twelve-thirty PM until midnight on Sundays. And I'll tell you right now, the, until midnight on Sundays is kind of incorrect. Midnight is Monday. So it's, I've, you'll see what we are proposing to you to do is, in conformance with the Brunch Bill, extend your hours of sale from eleven AM, and actually made it eleven-fifty-nine PM on Sunday, so it's truly Sunday sales. So that's what the Brunch Bill authorized. There was some confusion about the Brunch Bill because it said, change the hours or or make the hours of sale from eleven AM to twelve-thirty. The reason for that was you're already authorized a sell from twelve-thirty. So this ordinance would conform to the Brunch Bill, and it would conclude what the voters authorized this board to do. And what the voters actually authorized you to do was adopt an ordinance, so you are required, if you want to conform with the with the referendum, to adopt the ordinance to make it effective.
All right, are there questions from the board? Did you have the results of what the voter percentages were in favor?
I don't have them. My recollection, it was, it was sixty percent, thereabouts. It was a little higher in each of the cities, but I think in this, in the unincorporated area, it was right around sixty percent.
Okay, all right, so we've heard the presentation. Are there any discussions or comments from the board? Seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that was five to one. Okay, thank you. So we'll now move into our public comment section, and this is the time where we welcome our citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions, and so how many do we have this evening?
There are four people that have signed up for public comment tonight. Bubba Coffey, Larry Maury, Robert Colepeck, and Michael Parish. So the first speaker would be Bubba Coffey, followed by Larry Maury.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if you will please come forward and state your names, or, and each will be given five minutes, and these are individuals that have signed up prior to the meeting. So thank you, sir. Good evening.
Thank you. I've been up here before about, Bubba Coffey.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I've been up here before last year about the wrecker services in Henry County, and y'all have three of them, and all of them charge a different amount. I've got a thing here with, this is what used to be wrecker one is now bulldog towing, and this is their fees on wrecks. And the fee on it there, you can see, is one seventy-five to work a wreck. The accidents and recoveries there are a minimum of three hours. That comes out to five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay? Look at the mileage up there, it's fifteen dollars a mile. This is ridiculous. This is what I tried to say a year ago, and the only one that said anything about it was Ms. Clemmons. I had a meeting with the county manager, assistant manager, the county attorney, and a guy that yuck, used to be on the wrecker thing. Anyway, when I got through with that meeting, the county manager told me if I didn't like it, to get me an attorney. So, I mean, my insurance has doubled. I asked the insurance people, I said, how come it's doubled? I got older vehicles, the, I hadn't had a claim in over twenty years, and they said they rated on the accidents in the area, and what wrecker services charge, they look at that also. Well, if you, if you say a, uh, single mom, dad have come home, hit a curb or something, busted a wheel, tire, car needs towing, you're looking at five hundred and twenty-five dollars to get it there. Then you've got a thirty-dollar storage fee as soon as it hits there. A lot of these people don't have this kind of money to get the car out. They lose their car, because they can't pay this. And that, my thing is, you've got three wrecker services in this county, and all of them charge what they want to, different prices. The only thing that is stable is the impounds. If you, you know, illegal park or whatever, the county gets you a per DUI, they impound your vehicle, that is one seventy-five. That's the only thing that is solid. Other than wrecks, the sky's the limit. I mean, this is ridiculous. I've been up here before, a year ago, trying to tell y'all this, and it's, it's just not right. And I asked you, when Don Ash, I showed this to Don Ash, and he looked at it, and he said, Bubba, and just shook his head. When Don Ash had this wrecker, when he was the head of the thing, y'all had a wrecker committee, and it was a privilege to tow for Henry County. Now, you know, they just charge what they want to. It used to, it used to be set rates on wrecks and impounds. If you worked a wreck, like it was eighty-five and one, one oh five, and you work a wreck, and there was glass out there, you got extra twenty-five dollars picking it up, and, you know, it was reasonable, and the first twenty-four hours of storage was free. And that's the non-consensual towing. You need to look at that. That is something. I mean, because it regulates, the admin fees, non-consensual towing is twenty dollars. They charge a hundred dollars for non-consensual towing fee. And on the heavy-duty stuff here. Rotator, that's a big wrecker, is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars an hour, minimum three hours. That's fifty-two hundred dollars for a wrecker to come out there. And you admin fee on that, you do the same thing you do as a car, and they add ten percent to the total bill. I tried to tell y'all this before, and you told me to get an attorney, but this, this ain't right. Y'all gonna have to do something about it. I mean, I've been in towing business for twenty-seven years. I towed tractor trailers and didn't charge but eight dollars a mile. You getting, he's on that right there, you getting fifteen. It's not right. So I asked y'all to look at it and do something with it. I'm not in the towing business, I'm retired, so don't worry about me getting back in a wrecker, I ain't gonna do it. I appreciate it.
My name is Larry Maury, and I'm four eighty-three Walker Drive in McDonnell. A few years ago, a young boy come to me and told me that he got caught with, with drugs. And I said, well, you ought not have got caught with drugs. He said, well, I did. So I told him, I said, all right, is this your first time? Yes, sir. I said, go to the commander and tell him that you'll work with him and help catch this guy that sells you the drugs. Well, I, I don't know. I said, wait a minute, you want me to help you? That's my recommendation. You tell him who sold them to you. And I said, if you do that, then we'll set up a buy. So he come back to me the next day, and he said, the commander told me that... So he come back to me the next day, and he said, "The commander told me that we, we can't do that, that way, and that I can't talk to you no more." I said, "Really?" So, now, I wanted him to go to the house and buy the drugs. The commander says let's get, get him to come in a car. And I said, "The reason he don't want you to talk to me no more is because he wants to get a little car. I want the house for the county." So there's a big difference there. Well, that, that cat ain't no longer with the drug squad because he got busted himself. There he is right there. He got caught stealing. So a few months ago, we, we brought up the such situation of the school system. And you know, Steve Chase and a couple of others said, "Oh, we got the best school system in Georgia." Well, here they are, and I'm gonna leave them with y'all. There's one B, this is state, by the state standards, governor state standards. There's one B, there's three Cs, and the rest of them are D and Fs. Thirty-six, it's thirty-six schools in the county. D and F. You sure need to check on things like that. This past week, this boy stepped on the teacher's foot, took a pencil, and he said, "I ought to just jog your eyes out." Just freaked her out, scared her so bad, she left and went to another county to teach. You don't hear nothing about that. You don't hear nothing about the little rape they handle, because of keep it quiet, out of sight, out of mind, know nothing, see nothing, do nothing. We just let it get worse. After a while, you know, keep doing same stuff, stupid stuff, and it'll get better. No, it don't work like that. Sooner or later, it's gonna come back to haunt you. You know, a few, a few months ago, we give all the rocks at the airport away, and I couldn't figure out, why would we do that? But I found out. Just as you go on one fifty-five across the overpass where you, you know, the train's going underneath the highway, they say truck parking lot. Wasn't, it was a little timber thing to start with, but they made it a truck parking lot. And instead of a couple of trucks in there a day, it's, it's like over a hundred now. And a truck coming down the overpass tried to turn in there, got, got up, because it's at an angle, and he got misjudged, he had traffic blocked up all the way on both, one fifty-five, both directions, and the angle road going into the parking area. And then I found out who has that parking thing for those trucks. And now I have found out where all that parking, all those rocks went, because this, this oligarch, I call them oligarchs just because they never get satisfied, they just make, you know, they're big boys in the county, just keep wanting to make more money, more money, more money. Well, I found out who that is. And so he's taking the rocks, making the truck parking spot. And you know, what's so bad about it is those people just built nice apartments right behind it, about three years ago. And I, I believe in helping the less fortunate. Well, you can't help those less fortunate now because them reefers that run all night, and them lights coming in there all different nights, those poor old people that live in those apartments, they're going through living hell, living the next, y'all are taking no, you're doing no research to find out where to park these trucks. You're just letting people, and one day, as that oligarch stepped out front of that train and hitting right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mori. Your time has expired.
Y'all gonna keep on, you know, God's gonna have to shake a couple more y'all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've concluded that public comment, and we have some more. Thank you.
And Michael Parish.
Evening, Commissioners, Chair, Robert Kolpeck.
Good evening.
Last meeting, I know some of the Commissioners weren't in, so just wanted to kind of reshare. I know that there's a Commissioner that says he only hears from three people. There's like sixteen fifty-one signed, and it says we have two thousand likes on the safe Cochrane Park. I would think the, as I talk to people around the county, nobody really knows what pickleball is. I, I've got some ideas for pickleball, and we got a senior center at, at Hidden Valley Park, and that is the tennis courts at Hidden Valley Park. I don't believe there's any, been any kind of water conservation area or Hidden Valley to cause that to the, to the top of that tennis court, but that's kind of a resurfacing issue. So if we resurfaced it, made it pickleball, I think that would satisfy the seniors that are there, and it would also make that dilapidated-looking tennis court, why would it be in that condition at this, this point in a county-owned park? And the basketball court, still just a little bit of leveling. We could bring the basketball goals back, level the ground for about less than a thousand dollars, and we could have a basketball court back at, at Hidden Valley Park. Said, shared it last time, same thing. Accountability feels like an attack when you're not ready to acknowledge how your behavior harms others. Read it again. Twenty-one teams at Hidden, at Cochrane Park, now we're down to nine at Hidden Valley. I don't understand why it costs less to repair it, put it back and run it for the kids. I assure you, all Commissioners, if you guys get behind us and let's reopen Cochrane Park, we will have volunteers out there to replace, re, repaint that dilapidated area of Cochrane Park. We're not talking about the piping, we're talking how the buildings look. There is plywood on the windows there, there's boards missing, there's fascia board missing at, at a park that closed in July. It's a shame. And then you go to Hidden Valley, it looks the same. You got a walking trail at Hidden Valley, we want to do walking trails at Cochrane Park. Well, next door is Gardner Park. Next door, Gardner Park is also pickleball. But this is one of your, this is a actual bench at Hidden Valley Park. Now, it's kind of funny, but that actually on top of Bruce's head looks like a pickle.
That's all, mister. We have to remove that, that is a personal, but please remove that, please. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, but that's, I didn't know what that, what that was about, but all I would like to do is, is ask, when we have the meeting Friday, you guys have a meeting, we, we come together, we reopen this park. If it means another Commissioner takes over the park, if the city doesn't want it, they offer a hundred thousand dollars to help with stuff in there. I'm, I'm offering the coaches, if you guys need emails, there's, there's two thousand people have signed up on thischange.org to get the park back open. And then also, let's go over to Hidden Valley. I know there's money in the spots, but what I understand is the, it's gonna have to be a convention, not the convention center, apologize, the aquatic center has to be built prior to any money going to the park. But there should be money put to Hidden Valley Park. It should look similar to what Village Park looks like. And again, I'll close out with this, and it'll be, never, never be afraid to do what's right, especially if well-being of person or animal is at stake. Society's punishment are small compared to the wounds we inflict on our soul when we look the other way. You guys ride over to Hidden Valley Park and tell me why it looks like that. And then go to, go to Cochrane Park and say, "Where's all these sinkholes?" I mean, it is a major safety factor, and I would think since July, we've had, we've had some sinkholes there. I don't think it's as bad as it is, and we found out what, what last Commissioner mean was five hundred and fifty thousand as opposed to the seven hundred and eighty thousand, right? So not sure what the love affair with pickleball is. It's not about baseball, it's about what the coaches do for mentoring. They mentor these young people, we're, we're putting money in Boys Club, which we should do, we're putting money into kids, but we lost twelve teams. So if I'm thinking right, on a team, twelve, twelve by twelve is a hundred and forty-four kids. Salem Baptist Recreation went from two hundred and fifty kids about four years ago to six hundred and fifty kids. You go to their facilities and see, they will not look like Cochrane Park, will not look like Hidden Valley. It actually looks very similar to Village Park. So my thing is why the disparity between the three parks? So that's all I got for tonight, you guys have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parish.
Good afternoon, Chair Woods, Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Michael Parish. I don't have a whole lot tonight to talk about, but I want to talk about Cochrane Park and Gardner Park and the stuff going on with the city this week. My first issue, me and Coach Powell, along with Rob Kolpeck, we spent a lot of time around Cochrane Park, and it seemed like every week, we see some fishy stuff going on. This week, we was there, I want to say Saturday, around ten to twelve o'clock, just walking and talking. Henry County truck pull up with a trailer, and I got pictures on my phone to back up what I'm saying. Pull up with a truck and trailer, I immediately asked the guy, "How you doing, sir? What you got going on today? You finna do some repair work?" He looked at me, he said, "No, I came to remove some bleachers." I said, "Bleachers? Who told you to do that?" He said, "I can't say." I said, "Where you going with them?" "We going to Nash Farm, there's a rodeo and ice skating down there." I said, "You passed two parks to come to Cochrane Park to get bleachers, you passed Richard Craig, you, you passed Warren Holder to come here to get bleachers at Cochrane Park. I said, "You planning on bringing them back?" He said, "I don't know." So me and Coach Craig, we did what we always do, we sat there until he left. It started raining, the gentleman decided not to leave, he gets in the truck, he sit there thirty minutes. We sit there thirty minutes. We was wanting to see what he was coming to get. So while the gentleman let the trailer get up, he left. Me and Coach Craig, we went to Publix and sat in the parking lot, the gentleman came back. I guess he seen our vehicles in the Publix parking lot. He sat there for I don't know how long, but my point is, I don't know if you guys familiar with what's going on in Cochrane Park. Is one person making these orders to go strip Cochrane Park, or do you all know about it? I mean, because what I know, Henry County owns the park, not one person, correct? I mean, I don't know how anybody can authorize a strip Cochrane Park. Base is gone, scoreboard is gone, wires hanging, bleachers gone. It's a mess. And I'm not understanding how does somebody authorize that. I thought you guys voted on what happened here, that's my interpretation while I've been here. But it looked like somebody authorized and just destroyed Cochrane Park, and that's not right. And we have a lot of citizens. I mean, I heard with Coach, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas stated a couple of weeks ago, she can't go to Walmart, she can't go to Kroger, she can't go to Publix. Me and Coach Craig can't do the same. I probably get fifty emails a day about Cochrane Park. But the thing is, I think a lot of us have lost track of why we are here. It's about the kids. It's not about what somebody did to somebody last year, or how it made you feel six months ago. With me and Coach Craig, I can speak for him and speak for myself. I have an issue when you neglect the youth. I have an issue when you neglect the senior citizens. And if somebody don't have that same belief, you got a problem. Now, I don't know how somebody can close a park down, and as State last Commissioner mean, Mr. Wilson stated how bad Henry County is growing. We need to build parks. We need kids doing things that'll help keep them out of trouble. I'm gonna share something with you real brief, and I wasn't gonna do it, but it's in my phone if somebody wanted to see it. I was asked today, I'm not the best guy in the world, but I'm not the worst guy in the world. One of my parents asked me, text me, "Anybody want to see it? You're welcome to see it." I shared it with Coach Craig today, this morning, ten-ten, I want to say. Parent asked me, "Coach, you been so good to my kid, I'm in a bad situation." And it's in my phone. Can my child come live with you? That really, it really struck me. And if anybody want to see it, you're welcome to see it. A parent felt that good about me, her child is thirteen, can he come live with me? It's not about baseball, ladies and gentlemen, it's about a ministry, it's about helping, saving, giving. That's what it's about. And anybody here got another motive, you might need to look elsewhere for employment. There's some people in this room who need to find love in Jesus, I'm sorry. And I hear this every day, we get a million emails, Coach Craig do too, but the stuff I got today, I love my job. It struck me really hard, that somebody felt that well about me, and all I did was coach your kid. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to get our stuff together right here. All the problems we got, throw them in the trash, man. Cochrane Park should not be closed. We got some issues we need to fix. The youth is the future. And if anybody here don't see that, you haven't raised kids, you haven't been around kids, or you don't understand how this thing work. We need to get Cochrane Park back open, it's a lot of parents need it. Me and Coach Craig collect zero dollars. It costs us to be there. And I'm here because of the kids. I know Craig, Coach Craig feel the same way. And other coaches do too, and as Rob Kolpeck stated, I gotta go there again. I've been playing ball at Ola for a long time, and I must say, every time we go there, I see the community, parents, working, spending money to make their park look the way it looks. Mr. Burnham got it right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our public comment section. Are there any comments from the, from the board? Yes?
Yes, I do want to make some comments about the wrecker services that Mr. Coffey, I think, made about. And I've had a conversation with Commissioner Clemmons as well. And we are very concerned about these outrageous rates that are being forced upon our citizens, and they should not be tolerated. And I have been on the other side of that, having to pay some of those rates. There should not be a minimum of three-hour services required to serve the citizens here in Henry County. I definitely want our policy reviewed and brought before, so we can look at how we can take care of this. And I want to stop that process, so we're allowing people to take advantage of our citizens when we can do something about it. So I heard you loud and well, I've had a conversation with Ms. Clemmons, Commissioner Clemmons as well, and we hope to bring something before this board to look at, once we get all the information and can determine what is taking place out there, and when these contracts are up in Henry County and up for renewal, because we're not going to tolerate any industry just purposely taking advantage of anyone. So thank you for bringing that before us, and I'm certainly hope as a community, we can get past all the issues and do work on our community parks as well. Looking forward to it.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
And I would echo that, Mr. Coffey, we are working on it. I know that Brad and Vance Rosen are working aggressively on it. I would ask Brad that we keep Mr. Coffey a part of the loop. He has experience, he's passionate about this, not just for himself, but he's fighting for the whole Henry County. So I would like to keep him a part of it. As I said to Mr. Coffey, he's my wrecker advisor committee, so we want to just keep him a part of what's happening with that. And just to say that I'm excited about what's happening at Nash Farms Park. District two is the entire west side of this county. We don't have an indoor basketball goal, an indoor basketball facility where our kids can play. We don't have a baseball field in District two where the kids can play. But you don't see the citizens in here complaining, because as a Commissioner, I figure out what we have to do to get by until we get what we need to make it. So I would just like to say that I'm excited about the rodeo, the ice skating rink, the tree lighting ceremony, the theater box, and everything else that we can do. Last Saturday, we had a cycling group that was having a cycling event at Nash Farms Park, the Boy Scouts was there at Nash Farms Park, and the rodeo, all at the same time, and somebody was out there doing photos, all at the same time, on two hundred and four acres of green space in this county. So yes, we needed bleachers, and as long as we got, and the bleachers belong to the county, they can move all over this county. And so I want to thank staff for what they did, but I will not have people terrorizing staff, telling them what they can't do at the county parks when you've instructed them. So I want to know if they had to leave, if they felt threatened, you know, what was going on that they didn't get the bleachers moved on time? So, you know, we want to make sure that that park belongs to the county, to all citizens, and not one particular group, and I don't want any staff person who moves things from a county park to feel that they got an answer to anybody. So I look forward to having citizens December first at Nash Farms Park. We have an ice skating rink. Citizens do not have to go to Atlantic Station anymore. We have our own ice skating rink in Henry County. We are working on having a public safety night, where all of our public safety will be able to come out and bring their family free and ice skate at the ice skating rink. So we're working on that, and I just want to thank staff for making it happen, and the board for supporting all the stuff that's happening, because when you don't have indoor things, you have to find outdoor things to do. So the citizens are excited about what's happening on the west side of the county.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Last meeting, Commissioner Thomas made a motion to approve five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix the stormwater infrastructure. And so what I would like to do is amend the agenda to make a similar motion.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda to discuss Cochrane Park. Is that what you're?
Yes.
So there's a motion. And there's a second. So any discussions or comments from the Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed?
So the last meeting, Commissioner Thomas made a motion to pay five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for infrastructure repair, and that would be funded from the county stormwater budget and gift the park to the city of Stabridge. And I would like to motion that we approve that to the City of Stockbridge. And I would like to motion that we approve that request. Also, once the city takes or accepts the park, then we will immediately move forward with allocating the funds to repair the park. That's my motion.
So there's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion, there's a second. Any further The concern I have about this is that there, we did have a conversation with the city, and the city has made a response back to the county, and I thought we could sit down and have a conversation about this, because I really wanted to hear the recommendations that came from our staff that also spoke about what are the true infrastructure issues that we need to do to open up the park. And, you know, that park belongs to the county right now. Based on the response that came back from the city, they basically are saying they wanted to do something, but it's our park right now. So there's a motion, there's a second, and those are my comments. I just think we need to fix the infrastructure and get the park back open and continue conversations.
So I have a...
So a conversation, yes.
So I want to be clear, because I don't know why we don't get things understood properly. So what Commissioner Holmes is saying for the public is that the county will fix infrastructure issues, the $550,000 infrastructure issues, and give the park to Stockbridge, and any other repairs or upgrades that need to happen to bring the park back whole with the baseball fields, the county will do, but Stockbridge needs to take the park. So once we finish it, it's their part. That's the motion, Commissioner Holmes?
That's the motion.
That's the, so that way, these kids can start playing ball immediately. The park is ready to go. But as long as we don't agree to go ahead and fixing the park, which is what he's saying, any vote against that will keep this park closed. So I want to make sure that the citizens know, any vote against that does nothing, because we got to vote to fix it and give it to them.
That we've made this motion, the first time it failed. So hopefully, we can, we can move this forward and squash all the negativity that's been out there in the community.
I want to hear from Commissioner Barnum, then I'll come back.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes, the way I understand your motion is, is we do the $550,000 repair, and then we give it to the City of Stockbridge, but if Stockbridge rejects it, are we still going to fix the park?
I think, I think if Stockbridge, if it remains a county park, the county, the county should be allowed to do what it wants with the park. If it's a city park, then the city is allowed to do what it wants. My vision for Cochrane Park is a passive park. That's my vision. I think it, I think it keeps the county from, from the liability of, of the water that runs beneath the surface and the, you know, the chance of a sinkhole developing, injuring anybody that's visiting the park. That's my concern. So if the city takes the park, they're just in charge of the maintenance, the operations of the park, and also they take on the liability. But we, we will totally repair the park. We will pay the utilities on the park. They're just responsible for the maintenance, operation of the, of the park.
And I would be fine with that, Commissioner, but the conversation we had, they didn't seem to be interested in taking the park. And I would like to see us go ahead and start repairing, get stormwater up there, and fix what needs to be fixed, because they'll start registration in January, and they'll start playing ball toward the end of February, and this repair needs to be done now. And, and we could get this done. If you would see fit to do that, let's go ahead and get the repairs done, and then we'll negotiate with the city.
We've been negotiating for six months. We've offered this park to the city, no charge. We're gifting the park to the city. All they're doing is taking over the responsibility. You know, I'm the Commissioner of this district, and when I found out about the hazards in the park, we immediately closed the park down, because we didn't want anybody getting hurt. So the city wants to keep the park the way it is. I'm fine with that. That's the reason why we're gifting the park to the city. If it's a county park, the city shouldn't tell us what to do with our property, just like we don't tell the city what to do with their property. My vision, and the people that I've had discussions with over the last few months, they want something similar to Village Park in District Five. So I'm fine with working with the City of Stockbridge to allowing them to, to keep Cochrane Park the way it is and paying for the infrastructure. All we're asking, all we're asking Stockbridge to do is take the park. Simple as that. Then they can run it, they can control it, and they can do whatever they want with the park. It's just, it's just a simple motion.
And, and the simple motion is, if you will adjust your motion to say, we just going to go ahead and do the repair, and then we'll have the discussion.
That's what my motion is, and then we're, but we're gifting the park to the City of Stockbridge. We're going to do the repairs, and we're gifting the park to the city. It's a simple motion.
We're going to keep the baseball field.
That's my motion. So let's vote.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson. And then I'll come, then I'll come back.
I'm trying to figure out exactly what we're trying to do. Trying to fix, we're going to spend the money regardless. Where Stockbridge takes it, it don't matter. So your motion is spend $550,000 to fix the park. Stockbridge don't take it, we still spent $550,000. If they do take it, we spent $550,000. But we have so many parks in this county that needs, that need repairs. And every time we have a $500,000 repair in a park, we can't be giving parts away, but we need to maintain all of our parts, and Cochrane being one of them. So if we're going to spend the money, let's go ahead and fix it and open it back up where the kids can play ball.
Okay, well, we're still in discussion mode right now. My point is, if we're going to repair, because that was the biggest thing, that was the main thing that I knew when we had a conversation with the City of Stockbridge, and I think that we should be able to sit down and have conversations about whatever is going on, especially if it's impacting citizens. And the City of Stockbridge requested a meeting. We needed to sit down and have that conversation. I think the Commissioners that did show up for that, but in their response, they're basically stated that, you know, again, they wanted to do something to get the park back open, but again, they were unsure about the repairs. But if we're saying, Commissioner, that we're going to repair it, I'm good with that. I understand that in your motion, you're saying, let's repair it, and let's gift it to the City of Stockbridge. It's going to be up to them to accept it. And regardless, if they decline that, then it'll have to come back before the Board on what type of park it will be. I understand that, and I can support that. Because again, we got to get the park back open. We're running out of time, and that was one of the things that I learned in the conversation. We've got to be able to have conversations, you know, with all organizations. So those are my thoughts, and thank you for the clarification about the repairs. So, wait a minute.
I think it's a very fair motion.
Okay, but wait a minute. We've got, wait a minute, Commissioner Barnum, Commissioner Mar, okay, we've got Commissioner Clemens and Commissioner Thomas, and then you go, let's make sure we hear from those that want to speak. So Commissioner Clemens.
And I would say that you have not had any unincorporated people to come in here. All these people that sit in here complaining live in the City of Stockbridge. And if Stockbridge is not willing to take care of their citizens, why are we doing anything other than giving the park to Stockbridge? Now, we've done everything that we can. We're taking unincorporated money. I'm unincorporated. I need the $550,000. But we're saying, do all of this work, like Commissioner Wilson is saying, and then give the park to Stockbridge, and they won't even take it? The question needs to be, why aren't these people in City of Stockbridge's meeting, asking City of Stockbridge why they won't take it? Why are they over here, other than it's a personal attack? They got personal things going on. And I'm saying, go to, go to the city that serves you and find out why they won't take this park. The county is saying, now we're talking about giving more than $550,000. Now, why would you fix a park and do all of that, and they telling, well, we don't want it. We just want y'all to spend y'all money. Well, they just built a $20 million amphitheater. They weren't thinking about the kids then. So I think that we have to get this off of us, stop these citizens from coming in here talking to us. We need to just go ahead and make our decision that we're going to fix it and give it to them. If they don't take it, they need to now take this conversation to the City of Stockbridge. So that's just my two cents on it.
Okay, we got Commissioner Thomas, and then I saw Commissioner Barnum. Commissioner Thomas?
Oh, I don't have any comments. I'm just ready to vote. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I saw Commissioner Barnum, Commissioner Barnum.
Yeah, I questioned the numbers about the unincorporated and incorporated, because I know in McDonough, when I ran McDonough Youth Association, a lot of times, there was probably less than 15% of the kids that actually lived in the city that played the park. Most of them came from the unincorporated area. So...
Okay, okay, Commissioner Barnum.
Okay.
I'm not talking about the kids.
Okay, excuse me, Commissioner Barnum.
All of the kids belong to the county.
Okay, 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 excuse me.
I can respond to...
Yeah.
All of the kids belong to the county. All of the citizens belong to the county.
I'm just thankful that we're going to do this for the children.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, we've heard the motion. So Commissioner Holmes, will you make the motion again?
Well, we already made a motion in a second.
Okay, we heard the mission and the second, and this is discussion. So all in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously on that. Okay, any other questions or comments from the Board? Just some FYI for the Board. Just want to let you know, we submitted projects into the Atlanta Region Commission for the Transportation Improvement Program. So what is the status now is the ARC is combining all those applications from across the state. They're going to be processing those applications, working with the Georgia Department of Transportation to analyze and evaluate those, but in, probably in February or March is when they're going to be making recommendations as to the priorities. Now, what is going to happen is that there's going to be a meeting down here. The ARC is going to come down here to talk about the project that we submitted, and we'll just make sure all the Commissioners are invited to participate in that. And then the other thing that came out of the Transportation Air Quality Control, y'all, you know, we've heard about the Major Mobility Initiative or, you know, that they're working on from a region standpoint. The good news for Henry County is when you looked at that map, they had all of the projects for the major transportation issues going north, and only Henry County's express lane, they're planning to actually extend that now from where it stops on the north side up into, until where it goes into Clayton on the express lane. And again, they're still looking at how do that commercial vehicle-only lane or truck-only lane is going to tie into Henry County. The thing that I thought was interesting, you had somebody else from another county, from another county says, okay, have you thought about taking that truck-on-the-lane all the way up to 675? So people are, again, looking at the transportation and looking at, and the ARC is doing that. So we may have an update on that later on, but I wanted to share that with you all as well. So those are my comments for this evening and updates for you all. If we can now move into the next item, unless there's another comment from the Commissioners. Regarding the approval of the minutes for September the 5th, that's a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. We now, are there any revisions or changes? And if not, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion is approved. And second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved. Regarding the upcoming meetings and events, on November the 22nd at 8:00 a.m., there was a joint development, joint meeting with the Henry County Development Authority at the Development Authority's office at 125 West Ridge Industrial Boulevard, McDonough. And then, of course, we were planning to, I had called a special call meeting regarding Cochrane Park. Because it has been resolved, that meeting will now need to be canceled, since the, the item has been resolved tonight. And then, on December the 3rd, at 9:00 a.m. is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 9:00 a.m. And then on December the 3rd is 11:30 a.m. call meeting for a legislative luncheon here in Conference Room B. And then on December 17th will be our last meeting for the year at 6:30 p.m., which is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time, the floor is now open for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Please stand. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you all.